Keep going.
Hour being nine o'clock, we'll call the meetings order for the March eighteenth County Commissioners Meeting. We'll start county business after a quick invitation. Anybody from the audience like to do such?
Oh, I'll do it.
Okay.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for this beautiful spring weather we've been having. We ask that you're with us, guide us, give us wisdom as we make difficult decisions for our county and its residents. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Amber. Good job, Amber.
For you, we have our agendas. Anybody have any additions or changes? Yes, Mr. Chairman?
May we enter old business? This is gonna take me a little while. May we have... To see the Vaultside letter, you have Vaultside somewhere up here, I think, but I want that letter. I never did receive the letter to Mallow. I never got the Title twenty-five contract. I'd like to see the Treasures Investment Contract. Or the Treasures Investment and Letter. Did you, you were the, uh, the letter two to the departments.
Yeah, I didn't get to you.
You don't, you don't have it yet?
I had it sent out.
Maybe.
I emailed.
Did you email?
I mean, I emailed all that stuff to you, so I can get you copies of that.
Okay, 'cause I don't have the, I didn't find the letter to Mallow. I did get some of this.
Okay, is the Mallow the insurance claim letter?
Just the letter we were always asking to get, that was way back at the first meeting.
I'm losing it, which, I forget which letter it is. I'm sorry.
Well, I keep asking. About the, about the...
Maintenance?
She was talking about the volunteers.
Volunteers?
Yeah, the volunteers.
And he said something... Offside.
I think he did, now that you say that.
So if I could just get a copy of that, that'd be good.
What else was there, Mariana?
I want the Title twenty-five contract.
Title twenty-five, oh, yes, with the cap, the charter cap.
Correct. And I don't know whether or not to put the Treasures Investment. It is a yearly thing that is due. If we just talk about it, and see if we can get it. And that's all I have.
Just those three?
Mm-hmm. You said you, on your letter, you sent two. I just want a copy of it.
Yeah, uh, I can, you want to send it again to her? Did anybody else on board do it?
I think so, I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, I kind of wrote a letter both to the insurance company over the Mallow side and then a letter to the department.
Oh, you just sent out last week?
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, any, oh, um... Let's, how do you folks feel about a quick little discussion about up to meetings under new business?
Yes, please.
I don't think it'll take long.
So, this came after the agenda was done. The Detention Center has a preauthorization, a credit card preauthorization request. I don't know if we want to put it on this agenda or wait till the next agenda. And if we do want to add it to this one, if we want to put it under new business, or it's for twelve hundred dollars for advertising for a new place.
Have they already put the other text file out?
Looked at it. I don't think so.
Time sensitive.
That's the question I was asking.
I don't.
It's for online advertising.
It must be.
It's a, it's a group that sends it out to about seven different newspapers.
If it's not time sensitive, I'd be okay with it being put on new business if it needs. Just to keep out the questions going.
I'll go with that. Any other conditions or changes to the agenda? If you're in, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
You don't bring me a motion.
Oh.
I'm like, okay, I need to...
I need to, I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Carpe for the horse here. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I like his feet, but I can't just eat them.
I missed it.
It's gonna be a long, you get style points, that counts.
Walter, do you have any comment on that?
No, there's my comment.
Is there any public comment? There's no study here, so. It goes to move right into the minutes, uh, the minutes of March fourth, twenty twenty-five. If anybody... Mariana?
Under the board, under AP vouchers slash payroll vouchers, second paragraph. Could we just put, the board would like Clerk Hadlock to ask the Wyoming Department of Health not to redact everything, 'cause I think that was from the Department of Wyoming Department of Health.
Yes.
And then under public records fee schedule. First sentence, can we end the sentence with public records searches? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And?
What else?
I'm adding Wagner after Vice Chairman on Board of Signature on Miami River Farm Project as well. For Chairman Todd.
You're on. All right, we're gonna take a motion to approve the amendments of March fourth as amended.
Don't move.
Second.
Proper second, all those in favor of the amended minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Yes, that's, uh, March fourth, twenty twenty-five. Probably walk them all.
Yeah, see, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any of those emails.
My email doesn't like your email.
Could have a couple of compatible emails, you're correct.
I'm playing my kid. You're using the Amherst one, right?
I get. So much junk.
And it was the Vaultside one?
I got one from Garrett and Nathan.
Mallow one?
Title twenty-five one I never saw.
That one I've never seen.
Yeah.
Now, I got that email where you sent. Just sent with the agenda, 'cause that's how I built my book. You even copied some of them that way.
Yeah, 'cause you said you were gonna get them.
Yeah.
You already didn't get them either, though, when hers went to her spam.
Yeah, for some reason.
She messaged me, so I re-sent them.
For some reason, my, her emails went to my spam this time, which never happened before.
So then I sent them again, I sent them to her, because it's a double.
Just loving those silver problems. We get them all the time.
I hate technology, 'cause I have emails, and then I get them all at once, and then...
I, my fear is I'm always losing them.
Well, when we went to this office three sixty, it filters and it picks which ones are the winner, and...
That's what you lose, is something that sends that spam, do you know?
Oh, mine do all the time.
That you need.
Yeah, by the way.
And if you don't filter through that within so many days, then it's just completely junked up. And then, inside or space forever.
Charge the land filter to delete the shit. They wanna control everything. They think the cloud's up there. We're looking, oh, the cloud, it's down in Cheyenne.
Yeah.
And Big Daddy Center's down there. That's where the cloud is. I'd make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of March fourth, twenty twenty-five. Second.
Proper motion forward to approve the minutes of March, executive session minutes of March fourth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have you actually signed it? I didn't send it on low down, so. Okay, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash five is an amendment to go to twenty-four twenty-five budget. What it is, it's moving one thousand forty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents out of General Finance Administration account and adding it to Treasures Mile and Travel and Conventions, which will have an expenditure amount of nine hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-four cents.
Explain that to me.
What's that?
So, why are we putting in a thousand and forty-two dollars to have an expenditure amount of nine twenty?
Because she's already in the hole.
She's in the hole, five hundred and twenty-two dollars, so leave her there. So leave her there.
That is money she used to send Kim to a, um...
We approved it.
She already came in and asked to have the money to do her deal.
So she already spent it, or she hasn't spent it yet?
No, she already spent it to send her to a class, and she already asked to have a budget adjustment.
So was it removed from her account with that amount? And now that she's a hundred and twenty-two in the hole, I gotta...
Yeah, she already spent it to send her to a class, which put her in the hole, and she's asking to be refunded for the amount it cost to send her to the class.
So what would be the point of refunding her? Is she sending somebody else to another class?
No, she's already spent it.
I understand, I understand that fully, but what I'm asking is why would we put money in her account if she doesn't have the intention to spend it again? That's my, my question. So my, my diatribe the other couple of weeks ago is that we keep overspending these accounts. If they overspend them, then they go without. So my question is, why would we give another thousand dollars in this account to have it spent again if that is appropriate that somebody else is going to some convention in the next five months? Then I, that's okay.
We should invite, as, uh, maybe invite Treasure over.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to explain my position, I don't understand why we are healing an account unless there's a purpose for it.
I get healing the hundred and twenty-two. I do understand your concern with the, 'cause we did give them, give her the authority to send Kim to that class.
Well, the idea, even if it was a hundred and twenty-two over, the line would stay there.
Is it fine here?
Yeah, it's shut here.
I see that, um, yeah. It's important to...
Good morning.
How are you? Commissioner Urban?
Depends.
Commissioner Urban had a question.
Well, all my question is, is do you have an intention of sending somebody else to another meeting or convention or travel?
Oh, yes.
To who?
Well, I plan on sending Kim in May to...
To another one?
To the Treas, now this, I'm talking Treasures. What are you talking?
Just, the question was asked to replace the money, although it was spent.
Yes, all for my travel, okay.
For the travel. So my question is, if you have another, if you have another that will cost...
Yes, ma'am. I've got my spring meeting, which is in May, and I've got Waco in August, but then August will be...
August will be the different budget.
But, yep.
Um, do you have an approximation of what that would cost for that?
Not right off the top of my head, because she'll be up there for three days in a motel and attending the meetings, and... It mostly should be, 'cause most of the time our meetings are, you know, once you get into the meeting, it's all covered money-wise. So it'll be, it will be fuel, and it'll be motel, and maybe a couple of meals.
Okay, that's what my question was, if there was something else going on.
Yeah, my...
If there was nothing, and you have to understand, if there was nothing else, it didn't seem right to refill a line item if it wasn't gonna be.
Well, and then I've got my girls going every second and third Wednesday to Upton, which is forty dollars and sixty cents a pop.
So you have, every Wednesday?
Every second, third Wednesday, and I've got...
So you think then, this number that was given was a thousand forty-two seventy-seven?
Yeah, that's what, that's what was spent on, um, which you went to that correct.
And fully understood, because, but that would have been in your budget, and it got paid, so do you have an estimate what it would cost for the forty dollars, so we can figure that out?
Well, we've got...
What do you add?
March, April, May, June, four, two, four, six, eight, and four.
Forty dollars?
Forty dollars, so whatever that is.
Very funny.
Good job.
Yeah, my baby's doing that.
Actually, it's forty dollars and sixty cents.
Well, where would that, so there's, there's that, and then the approximate amount for...
I would say...
Five hundred bucks is probably gonna be close, so I guess, you got four nights? Or three nights?
Two nights, I think. Especially if you have stuff there, and...
Where's it at?
Up there. Yeah, 'cause I'm sending her because I will be short, my new person will just be coming in, or she'll be coming in first of the day.
So there's the other question, then, probably a thousand forty-two won't be recovered?
Probably won't.
So you're still going in the hole?
Probably. Or not.
I guess, I guess in the, in the future, something like that. Granted, we're not real close to ending the budget, but how do you, what, what would be a better way to cure that towards the, I mean, how far do you let, how long do you let something go in the hole if, you know, it's um, without doing adjustments, I guess?
I think if you're not totally in the hole on everything, I think you're still safe, isn't that right?
Long as it doesn't affect your wages.
Yeah. But what, what got me was when two of us went down to Rock Springs to Waco last year. That was more money than I anticipated, so. Any other questions? Thank you. Did you guys get the investment sheet?
Yes.
No, all of you did it. Did you get it?
It's in your folder.
It's in my file, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I moved a lot of the investments in the money market, because I thought the bank suggested doing, because they don't use their CDs anymore.
All right, for what's we still have a, this amended, um, this Resolution twenty twenty-five five. All those, oh, sorry, entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash five.
Still moved.
Proper motion to move. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly seconded. All those in favor of approving Resolution twenty twenty-five dash five, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No, please, please.
I'm aye. Okay, is Mr. Style gonna get on Zoom or...
Yeah, there he is. Tell him he's needed.
Give me if it's still Paul.
He's still muted.
Keep working on it. There you go. Can we hear him?
I'm not gonna say that.
We had this problem last time, didn't we? Uh, Paul, we can't hear you, we might have to have you call in on the phone. We can watch you and listen to you at the same time on the phone, if you'd like. Or just maybe dial in. Do you have a number?
He does.
He's got a number. Sorry, Paul. Why would that be? Couldn't help the issue of last, last week, too?
Is it a speaker issue? Can you get one of those speakers? Little box speakers.
Yeah, just dial in, Paul, if you can. We can't hear you for some reason. We had this issue last time as well, but, at the last meeting. Apparently the others on the Zoom can hear you, but we can't. Should be something like this.
It's up.
You called Paul.
According to them, he's on hold.
Are you there, Paul? Okay, hold on, let me put you on speaker. Are you there?
Yes, yes, I am.
Hi, Paul.
Hello, everybody, how are you?
Good, thank you, good morning.
Good morning. I'm sorry about that. I don't know if it's on my end or or on, on yours, on that, so. I can hear you fine, so. I can hear everything there fine, so. Um, just, so Becky was gonna print out everything, so does everybody have a printed copy of what I set up? And I think I even got it emailed to you, too.
Yes, sir.
Okay, on that, so if you don't mind, I'll just, um, um, start. I kinda, I'll just, I think everybody heard me with this a few times, so I won't, I'll just be reading and describing everything, what's in the financial statements. I'll just hit some of the highlights and, and talk a little bit about the ARPA money.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a Bootleggers Liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
So I won't, I'll just be reading and describing everything, what's in the financial statements. I'll just hit some of the highlights and, and talk a little bit about the ARPA money, um, and where we stand with the solid base and, and a few things. So I'll just start with a short letter, our communication with government. And that's a three-page, and I've been through this before, I go through my responsibilities, accounting responsibilities, and so on. On the, on the top of page two, I highlighted the property taxes. And I think it's real important that everybody understands this, for accounting purposes, for the financial statement presentation purposes... And I think it's real important that everybody understands this, for accounting purposes, for the financial statement presentation purposes, we don't recognize the taxes on the same way the budget does, on that. So, when the energy producers are prepaying, they're prepaying up to almost, sometimes through the state, they're prepaying up until almost sixteen months unavailable. And then that money's allocated from Department of Revenue back to the county, and then the county can spend it and do as pleased as. But the problem is, on the, on the financial reporting side, on my side, we cannot take that money into revenue until the mill levies are set. Okay? Because that mill levy could come in. You never change your mill levy. You always change those twelve mills. But other entities I go to, they change their mill, they might decrease it or increase it. So, if they decrease their mill, those producers owe more money back in. If they, if they, if they decrease their mill, the county would owe that money, and the other entities would owe that money back to the producers. So, we always have that month lag, that year and a half lag on the property taxes. So, that, that, what I've picked up in the lag will roll back into revenues in twenty-five. But then I'm gonna have the same issue on the end of twenty-five, and then it'll roll back in in twenty-six. Does that make sense on how that, that new issue with, with the producers, the debt warrant taxes, is working now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then last year, I reported in here, we, under the difficulty of counting, performing, performing an audit, we had a, a lot of problems at the Fair Board, if you remember, on that. And they have worked diligently, especially Francie there, out there, because it worked really hard on getting this all caught up and up to date. And she and I have exchanged a lot of emails, a lot of calls, making sure that they're on track with this. And I, I'm real pleased with how, how that's been going on that. On that. And I hope that they're meeting on your end, what they're needing, what you requested them, on that. Because I, I go through the minutes, and it looks like you're having a pretty good dialogue back and forth. But they, she put a lot of time in this, and we talked a lot about setting up the payroll going back out there. I, and she's real, been real diligent about it, and I hope, I hope those problems are behind us now.
That's good minutes. Thanks, Paul.
I wanna point out here is, when I put these financial statements together, I, I'm, my job is kinda, I'm a tourer, kind of a, I take the information from the county and the state and every place else that I gather it. And I put these, part of my job for you is putting these into form of financial statements, at least the state requirement. And, you know, in doing that, I'm not supposed to make any management decisions or anything like that. But all the information that goes into this is, is information that I have from outside of mine. So, it might be coming from the county, it might be coming from the Wyoming Retirement System, it might be coming from the Department of Health and so on. So, that's kinda part of my job is to, to take and assemble this information and put it in the form of financial statements, so they meet the state's requirement. Okay, that's kinda what I wanted to cover there. On the, on the big financial, on the big book. In terms of table of contents, I highlighted there, right behind the title page. I highlighted everything there in yellow, that's the financial statement, that's the best. That's what my EICPA requirements for presenting, for vetting the financial statements. In the past, you know, I've talked about the three sets of reporting here. We got the budget information. We got the fund financial statements around thirteen through sixteen, and they're tracking it by revenue streams and restrictions. So, like your, like your, your state and county wealth money, that's gotta go into its own fund, and that shows that it's restricted within that fund. You can't use it for any of that thing else, but the state and county wealth fund, and the general fund, you can kinda use whatever you want to. Now, with ARPA money, that's gotta go into the ARPA and go up. And so, then we also, then on page eleven and so on, we have the full set accrual, and that's rolling everything up, including, including the non-spendable resources, the fixed assets, the roads, the buildings, and so on, equipment and so on, and then we depreciate those up. So, part of my job is, my main primary focus is to make sure that the Ivan Daniel are thoroughly presented in accordance with accepted government accounting standards. So, that's my primary purpose. And part of that, and part of my opinion, my opinion on that, I am required to consider controls that, that I'm basing my opinion on, okay? So, I mean, so I'm required to go through the controls and evaluate those, so I mean, going through tax disbursements, making sure you're signing the vouchers, things like that. That, that is the basis for my opinion.
Paul, may I interrupt you?
Yes, ma'am, Marty.
Would you tell us what you have highlighted, because we didn't, ours aren't highlighted?
Oh, okay. So, it's pages one, pages one through four down to fifty-four. I'm sorry, I put it in yellow, and that might not accommodate very well.
So, the whole kit and the bootle from one to fifty-four?
Right, that's the financial statement.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you. Thank you.
And then part of my, part of my job, too, is, my requirements are, that I'm required to evaluate compliance with laws and regulations that I feel are material and probably establishing my opinion. Okay? So, I mean, there might be certain laws and regulations don't, don't have any effect on, effect on my opinion on the financial statements, but things like the Treasury, budget procedures, disbursement procedures, tax collections, and things like that. I have to evaluate the, the compliance with those, with state statutes and federal statutes, the things that I feel are material for me to put the financial statements together. Okay? And then I report on those, and they're on the next page, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty-one, and so on. So, that's my compliance and internal control. And then, then we have the ARPA money, and we have the Bankhead Jones money, and we have the Air Force Fund, we have the VOP Fund. Once we get over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, then I've gotta report on those from the federal government. And that reported on page fifty-five and fifty-six, with federal awards. And then I also have to do a, a compliance report, internal control report for the federal awards, and that's on fifty-nine to sixty-one. I don't know if you have any questions on any of those. I know that's kind of a lot to go through. But that's kind of my purpose in presenting these financial statements. I, sometimes, sometimes I, people think, oh, my job is to look for fraud. No, if I detect fraud as a byproduct of me expressing my opinion on the financial statements, then I report on. Okay? On that. Page one through, one through four, then, past the table of contents, go through, go through my report, my audit report. And the first thing we start out with, when we audit those financial statements, and we believe these certainly present the position of Weston County as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. I'm gonna skip ahead to page five. The Management Discussion Analysis. This is just kind of a summary of what's included in the big package on that. Just some highlights and tries to explain what's all included in the financial statements on that. On page, page, um, page fifteen. It's a balance sheet. This is a full accrual, the balance sheet, in terms of, broken out, the primary government's gonna be the county. And then we have a library there, the Weston County Solid Waste, and the Central Weston County Solid Waste. And I don't know if the circle's showing up there, if it's in green there, I don't know if that's showing up. We merged, so we got, we rolled the Central Weston County Solid Waste District into the Weston County Solid Waste District effective July one, twenty-twenty-three. So, the Central Weston County Solid Waste no longer exists. I've highlighted a, a couple things there, under the primary government, so this would be the general county. The non-fund liabilities, two, two-point-seven million for, uh, um, that's primarily the pension plan under the Wyoming Retirement System. And then we have the property taxes unavailable, and that includes those taxes that I have to put off. You've collected them, you've spent them. Or you can spend them, you can allocate them out to these other entities, you can do whatever you want to with them. But for me, I gotta put off taking those into revenue for about, it's like sixteen months. And then next year, those go to twenty-twenty-five, those will roll into revenue. But on the other hand, I'll have what was uncollected and based on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. Then on the Central County Solid Waste District, um, we rolled, because they got the four-point, whatever, four-point-four million dollars for the new, for the solid wa, for the new solid waste facility. And so, that, we actually have to show it. I know everything went to them, but we have to show it running through the county also, because the county got it, and then paid it out, back out to the solid waste district. So, kinda double reports it in here. Um, but, but, yeah, so, so we have to take that four-point-four million in under the county. We show the county paid it out, and then it rolls into the solid waste district as revenue. And that, that in and out is shown there on page twelve. You remember Public Works, the one, about six line down, six Public Works? Seven-point-seven-one-nine million, which is a lot more, four, four-point-five million, that more than that normally is. So, that's shown as an expense there in the first column, but then we show it as a grant in for four-point-four-seven-eight million coming into the county. So, the county just serves as a pass through on that federal money. And so, when that happens, anytime that the county detects money, or the state touches it money, that eventually gets paid the other year thing out. They also have a reporting requirement regarding that. So, the money, the state's gonna show up the same thing. They're gonna show the money taken in and the money paid out on that. Then I'm gonna skip ahead, year two. Page twenty-three, page thirteen, excuse me, page thirteen. Page thirteen, um, the third one there, um, the third column in there, there's that American Rescue Plan Fund. And so, um, the, essentially, at the end of the year, the state will kind of tardy on getting some of that reimbursed. And so, the, the, the big bill came in for the, for the solid waste we're owed at the end of the year. So, if the solid waste owes that money at the end of the year, we also have to show up the state or the back to the county. Okay, that's the one-point-two-eight million, and the one-point-six million there under American Rescue Plan on that. And I've talked about the receivables on there earlier, about how we're doing our receivables here. Return to page fifteen. This is the fund, this is the in and outs, again, just on, since they're cash basis, and some accruals in here, for unpaid bills. And I just look at, come down here, excess deficiency of revenue, go with expenditures. So, the county ran positive, one-point-two million. A lot of that was the, the Bankhead Jones. I don't know how you ended up with so much Bankhead Jones last year, but it was about double what it normally is on that. And then the county wealth fund, they had some expenditures under that, that actually ran a deficit. And, and, and the other governmental funds, or the, the smaller grants fund, the public health funds, the SLIP fund and everything, and they should run, they should run pretty close, break even, because you take the public health money in from the state, and you pay it back out. So, that's an in and an out most of the time on the, on the grants. So, then I'm gonna skip ahead, gonna have to talk more about, a little bit more about the solid waste. You skip ahead to thirty-two. There's the bottom of the page, Weston County Solid Waste.
Michael Stolkin did things right. And, and what Nathan Todd did in that meeting, dressing him down, he said not to pick sides. No, he did pick sides. And he picked Becky Hadlock's side, and once again, Becky Hadlock was wrong. So, thank you on behalf of the people of Weston County, to Michael Stolkin, for stepping up and doing the job that the people elect him to do.
Well, and not only was she wrong, but once we finally got our records request, she was even more wrong, because it was incomplete. And the state public records ombudsman admitted that, and said that those documents should have been included. So, I just find it interesting that everybody puts faith in someone who continues to make the same mistakes, which, at this point, aren't mistakes.
There's the bottom of the page, Weston County Solid Waste. Um, because they assume that lots of the post-closure landfill costs of the Central Wyoming Solid Waste, which is an estimate for the future cost under that, because they had to take that liability on. And then we also started drawing the money from, from First Northern, First State, or whatever it is, the First Northern Bank there, of the capital lease that they have. And so, they have drawn two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of that at the end of the year. Um, and so, but there's still, uh, the maximum out there, the details, the one-point-nine-five million. So, they still have about, uh, one-point-seven undrawn at that time, going through their interest rate repayment requirements, and so on. Um, and I think, the way I read this, that this is, um, still, I mean, we're showing the liability on the, on the solid waste. But the, the, the county is still liable for that, if the, if the solid waste does not pay it. That's the way I read the lease on that, that you both are obligated to that. But I'm gonna skip ahead again to page, page, oh, my page dropped off. Page, um, page fifty, fifty-five. I gotta resize that, so my page can get, page fifty-five. Those are the federal alerts. Details of the federal money that the county brought in and paid out. Feel true to that, so the big item there at the top, third item down is the Bankhead Jones. Nine-hundred-and-twelve thousand, like I said, that is about double than it normally is. Then if you come down to the middle of the page, where it says Department of Treasury, four-point-four-seven-three million, giving the county. And that's the, that's the, the landfill grant, again, through, through SLIP, through, through ARPA. So, we showed it came in, and then it was passed through, and the third, second column was passed through to the solid waste district. Then at the very bottom, so we ended up, six-point-two-seven-three million for federal money, and usually, it's not even close to that. Usually, I mean, you know, pre-ARPA, and pre-COVID, and everything like that, I mean, usually it ran about a million dollars. Um, but, but, you know, last year, with everything going on, it was six-point-two-seven-three. Um, it had been higher for some of the other federal money that came through in twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, but that's where we ended up for the federal money in twenty-twenty-four. And then I'm gonna skip ahead.
Hey, Paul.
Yeah, yeah, Nate.
The, the nine-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand on that Bankhead Jones, is that a number you got from the Treasurer's Office? Or did you get that from-
Yeah, that's what was received in. Is that not right?
I'm not telling you it's not. I'm shocked if that's correct, though.
Yeah.
But there should be documentation of that.
I'll pull it up and verify that.
Paul, but there should be verification, shouldn't there? I mean, they usually send a statement.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
So, we could ask for the same.
So, I'll, I'll check on that, okay? On that. I'll double-check that. I'll double check that.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, then on 62. We have our findings. We always have this for the small office side, is that at the component unit, the library, you know, the library, the fair, mall, they just have one person doing the books there. I think that was probably stressed quite a bit when you did your board trainings and things like that from the state, that those boards need to be on high alert or, you know, and just do their due diligence, you know, ask responsible questions, you know, question things if they have questions on them and just don't be asleep at the wheel on those. And then the last thing I had on 63, the county handbook described there, but that's pulled right out of the county handbook. And I mean, you're a small town, I realize that there's times that come up with transactions with members of the governing board, fair board, library board. I mean, I know people all have businesses and things like that. On that, but I mean, in a small office, small town, small community, that there's always going to be a lot of, every place I go usually has some transactions, a few, with members of the governing board on that. And I went through the minutes and I always have to ask, one of my required questions is when I'm doing an audit, is there transactions with members of the governing board or elected officials or so on? Because that is a high-risk area for us. And so when we have a transaction like that, I feel that the, you know, usually what I see is the board member excuses themselves from voting on that. And so I know a lot of times the transaction, the board might be in the consent agenda or something like that. And, you know, what I see is the person involved says, I vote to approve the bill that's set for check 7,293. Okay, just so that it's documented that they're not approving their own bill. Okay, on that. And another part of that I would think would be great is if, you know, and I see this once in a while, I wish I'd see it more, you could even do this through the library fair, elected officials, Mall Camp, all of those, is that they sign an annual statement of what they have a conflict of interest with. And so that could be anything, I mean, not just transactions with the, you know, trying to be all-inclusive as possible on this. But it could be anything, like if I'm a ranger and live on the county road and somebody could come in and accuse me and say, well, this road's getting plowed. Well, mine isn't. Just things like that. I mean, there's all kinds of things that could go into this that you don't think of. You know, I've had, you know, I've seen a lot of different things, but I, you know, if there could be just some sort of conflict of interest statement, I hope that it could be as clear as possible, not just transactions with members of the governing board or, you know, payments to, but other things that might be considered benefiting the commissioner or benefiting the board member that, that that it's documented and so like if I'm the county commissioner and we're voting on this, something on this county road or voting on something on this county road, I, you know, really should abstain from that. Because somebody could come in and say, you know, you're a commissioner or you are a board member or benefiting from that.
Paul, what about like, because we are a small county, what about like family members serving on boards that we, is that something you would take issue with too, like if you have a, say, a wife or a son serving on a?
Yeah, I see that a lot too, Nate. And I mean, I don't know what to do about it. I know it's hard to, it's hard enough to get somebody to serve.
Yeah.
Serve on a board on this, I mean, that's something you probably should be documented in that too.
Yeah, I could, I understand. That makes sense to do something like that. I understand your concern.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, I, you know, I see, yeah, I mean, I've got one county where one of the commissioners' wives serves on the library board.
Yeah, my mom's on the library board.
You know, somebody might make the argument that the library board got something special because the commissioner's wife was serving on the library board.
Yeah.
You know, and I never, some of the stuff people come up with, I just say, how are you coming up with this? You know, I mean, it's like, really? But I mean, if it's documented and, you know, and abstained on, on things, you know, it just, it limits the possibility of somebody questioning something.
Understandable.
On that, you know, so I mean, there's all kinds of things that I've seen, you know, people getting accused of on different things. And if you have that conflict of interest, you know, and you, and everything you could think of, I mean, there's some things that I'm not even thinking of.
Yeah.
That, you know, and then if, then if when it comes to voting on something that's on your list or something else, then that commissioner really should, you know, you know, I don't really need, technically would need to excuse themselves or just not take part in the discussion, especially not to just not take part in the discussion or preferably excuse themselves and not vote on things.
Thank you.
In that way, it just cuts down any, any issue that anybody can raise.
Understandable. Thanks, Paul.
That's kind of what I wanted to cover. You know, we had, like I wanted, I covered that, you know, what we got corrected at the fair. Those are the things I kind of wanted to cover today. If you got questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Or if I don't have an answer today, I'll follow up on it.
Paul, is page 65 and 66 not included in your stuff?
Oh, now I, sure, yeah, no, those, 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 those are the reports. I'm just, I had a lot more findings last year, Nate.
Okay.
Because I had the findings on the fair and some other things. And so I had a lot more findings. And so then on 67 and 68, we were required to report on how the county resolved, or if they've been resolved and how the county resolves them. And so that was, there's a couple things in the fair that I decided, you know, I mean, we started out last year with the fair not even having any accounting records. So we had to go back and recreate the county records for '22, '23. And, you know, and then so like I said, granted, she took that over and kind of ran with it. And I appreciate, we'd be exchanging a lot of emails and phone calls and things like that because she's really want to do this right.
That's good news. I think there are a lot, there are a lot here to go through. I'm gonna read it when I get home tonight and
Okay.
I appreciate everything, I assume.
Yeah, I mean, these are just facts, so I mean, if you got things, there's no financial statements, they're not mine.
Yeah.
There's, you can't even win them in mind, the findings and the reports, that's anything that's mine.
Yeah, I assume we can reach out to you if we have questions after Dylan through, in the future. And Marty's got a quick question, too.
Yeah, Marty.
Isn't that cute how you said the word quick? I have two on page two. We've gone through this before, but I just want to bring it up again. Because we don't get the financial data from the Weden Pass and from the Friends of Fair, I mean, we've had this issue for years.
Yeah, well, the Friends of Fair refused to provide any data a couple of years ago, and we brought that to the county commissioners. And at that time, I mean, that's when I first started doing the audits. So that's been six or seven years ago.
Correct, so what my question is?
So I mean, yeah, I mean, I haven't revisited or anything like that. If you want me to, I can do that next year. You know, the day, you know, there was kind of that, you know, I don't know what it has between the commissioners and the Friends of the Fair board. And I know the fair board's exchanged a lot of members. And the Weden Pass, I don't think has, doesn't require to have an audit. And so I'm not really at liberty to include non-audited financial information with audited financial information.
So my question to you, Paul, is what does that do to our financial statement?
I just have to say they're not presented.
So it really doesn't do any, it's just that they're not reported?
Yes, that they're not reported, yes.
Okay, good, sorry.
I don't, I don't think it'll do you much good to try either again in the future, Paul. It was, it was, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I don't think it'll do you much good to try either again in the future, Paul. It was, it was, yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so I mean, yeah, so it's just saying a minute, the Weden Pass still has to report to the state and do the procedures for their level of revenue on that. So they're still going to have to file the reports they need for the state on that. But, you know, I just, I really, you know, everything in mind audited. And if that's still not audited, like the last time I checked, you know, I, it makes no sense for me to include mixing those together.
Enough, thank you. And then I have one more question, if I may, please.
Yeah, Marty, yeah, go ahead.
On page 15.
Uh huh.
Could you explain to me how in the county road fund, there'd be a deficit?
Well, I don't know. I mean, there was just more, I mean, you kind of accumulate things. I don't know, I'd have to go through and see what that extra was spent on. You did a budget amendment to move 500,000 or 600,000 into there for extra spending. You know, I don't know what the projects were on that.
Several years ago.
That's only been a year.
Yeah, but that big, that big number was back when, that year that we had the
So I don't know if there's, I mean, that's fine, they could run the deficit, that's fine. You know, I mean, I mean, we just, most places that just, that I go to accumulate money until they, you know, until they have a larger project that they need to use it on. I could go back and tell you, I mean, I've got the history of what it was used for.
What, did we just not, in your opinion, did we just not move the money?
No, it's there, it's there. So the county road fund had 4 million dollars
That's what I'm saying. So that's my question is, I'm just struggling why it'd be in a deficit, because we have plenty of money.
Well, it's not in a deficit because it ended up year up at 3.4 million dollars. It went from 4.1 million to 3.4 million. So it started the year at 4.1 and ended up the year at 3.4.
So explain that the parentheses around 687,000 for me. I know I'm a simple mind, so I need simple answers.
Yeah, so we started the year at 4.1 million. It's a tax with an interest of 3.79 million. And spent 1.66 million. And so that left us with 3.4 million at the end of the year. I mean, that money should have paid out of the general fund.
That's my question.
If you wanted to, but for the county, it's better to spend restricted money
Absolutely.
first than unrestricted money. So because if that money's in the county road fund, that can only be spent on roads. So that deficit of 600,000, it's better for it to come out of the county road fund.
That's my question.
Because if it comes out of the general fund, it's taking money away that can be used for anything.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely. That was my suspicion. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Any, anything else?
I have not seen anything, Paul.
Okay, let me know if you have any questions. I mean, if you want me to get back on, you know, and go over something, I'm always happy to do that. Thanks.
You bet.
Sorry about the problems with the audio.
Oh, no, it's our fault, I think.
Thanks for your time and let me, and let me do this remotely.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. I believe it was a blade, Marty, last year.
So why did it come out of the county road fund?
I thought it did.
Somehow it's being audited that it didn't. Yeah, but what I'm telling, well, what I'm saying, that's what I was trying to ask the question of.
Yeah, that's confusing murder.
Because I think he's putting all money together.
Yeah. It looks like we overdrawed the county road fund by 600,000 with the way it's reported here, but it just be pulled that much out of there as all. Is that what you guys take? Yeah, because there'd been like from the year before and that year, about 200,000.
That's, I fully understand that. What I'm saying is I think that they're putting two, they're taking the budgeted money and the non-budgeted money and putting it together. But what I'm trying to figure out is if there's a deficit, he put it in as a deficit. And the explanation that I got is that it might have been spent from general fund money when it could have been spent out of county road fund money.
I don't think it was, though.
So my question is either the reporting isn't so that he could read it
I'm gonna call him.
and understand it. That's what I'm saying. So if we spent general fund money that was not responsible on our part, we should have been spending county road fund money.
Pretty sure we did.
Then it did get reported so that he could see that.
I'll call him and see if I can get a more definite, something clear.
Oh, I would appreciate, only because if it's not reported to him as that way, if he couldn't read it through his discovery, then either we fix it.
Yeah, it'd be interesting if he could show me how he came up with that, where
Exactly, where the
where it was reported that.
Did we not have a form? Did we not have some?
Yeah, it'd be interesting if he could show me how he came up with that, where
Exactly, where the
where it was reported that.
Did we not have a form? Did we not have some?
Drew may be calling in on that, too. He might have to kill it again, but she's been reading for you tonight.
I wouldn't have that maybe highlighted and
Got it. Thank you.
Hold it, I'm on speaker.
Till the morning doing it.
You're welcome. Morning. Okay, are you there?
I am.
Okay.
Morning, Drew.
Good morning, commissioners.
You have the floor.
Okay, well, I'll make this pretty quick. We'll start with the Newcastle BLM. So as you all know, we submitted very comprehensive comments. And then BLM then allowed for a limited 30-day comment period. They extended it, that was over yesterday. We did not submit any supplemental comments because I think we, I think we included everything in our original. in our original submitted. So, um, at the first of the month, another, a couple of things. At the first of the month, Kevin Christensen, who is the district manager overseeing the Newcastle BLM office, he was based in Casper, and Kathleen Michael, both with BLM, and Kathleen was the leader on this project, they both took early retirement earlier this month, so they are no longer with us. Um, Kat Kraus is still here, and I believe that they have replaced, um, we've got an acting district manager who's been the donkey, she's done this before. And then I believe that they've also found another project lead on our project that has been involved with it. So, um, so there's gonna be a few new pages, I just wanted you to know that. Other than that, I do not have any new timing. Um, Kat has not been given any direction yet from leadership, as you all understand. Things are moving at a very rapid pace out of DC, but, um, they haven't yet focused on, on some of these projects in the state. So, that's all I have on BLM. Is there any questions on the Newcastle document?
No, ma'am. For me, anyway.
Black Hills? I really don't have an update for Black Hills either. Uh, there's been a lot of changes. There's been a lot of probationary people that have been, like, in the DCA. Um, some of those are in Wyoming, and they're looking at, uh, I believe they're still looking to start our DIS this summer with a notice of intent. But we really haven't been able to have any conversations with Black Hills, um, because they've been doing a lot of turnover and they've been getting a lot of different directions from their leadership in DC. So we've not been able to talk with them the last couple months to get an update, so I don't have much to share with you. I do not think that the cuts occurred at the regional level with the Mountain Services Planning Group. So I think they stay pretty whole, but I do know I, they have lost some positions in Black Hills. So I think we're trying to figure out what we have, what we don't, and how we're gonna move forward. Um, any questions on Black Hills?
No, last email I saw, Drew, it looked like they don't even know, like, they're still trying to gather themselves and pushing things off, so, I mean, was that your take on it?
Yeah, I will tell you this, Commissioners. So last month, you know, I, I go out every year before NACO with Campbell and Converse County, and we schedule a bunch of meetings. WCCA went out with us this year. We had like ten meetings in two days. We had three separate meetings with USDA, one with the Forest Chief, who was the old Forest Chief, Randy Moore, and then the next day with the new Forest Chief, who is Tom Schultz. Um, we had conversations about this, and, and here was our thing. You know, we understand this chaos. We're not gonna complain about the dine audit and fraud waste and abuse, you need to look into that. But in your sense, if you reduce the size of government, please don't forget, Wyoming can play very nicely and was twice and ready to do so to get to unleash American energy. We're also twice and ready to help with increasing timber production. But don't forget, sixty-six percent of our minerals and fifty percent of our surface are owned and managed by the federal government. If you're going to start reducing, um, those positions in those, in those districts or local offices, that's gonna affect our ability to do NEBA, to conduct leasing, to get permits out the door, to do EAs for projects, to do inspections, and that's gonna create bottlenecks and delays. So please remember that those, those positions could be significant for us in helping meet the President's priorities.
Hundred percent agree.
So that was taken well, I think, with...
Oh, hundred percent agree, yeah.
So I think it's back on the direction that agencies are getting, I think depends on when your secretary was confirmed at, at, by the Senate. So the secretaries that came in very early, which would be Secretaries of Energy, Secretary of Interior, they were able to give guidance to their agencies probably faster than some of the other agencies that didn't get their secretaries until the end of February or early March. So there is some stagnant, there is some stagnant, um, things happening and this, and I would say messages and direction and guidance are clearly getting to the lowest level yet, but I think that we're starting to see some of that stuff move. But we just wanted to also remind them that while we can play in the energy space and the timber space, there's gonna be impacts to our communities. So as you're freezing or pausing all of these funding opportunities, because you need to make them consistent with the President's guidance, we get that, but just remember, there's gonna be impacts to our communities. Our communities still need help with sewer, water, broadband, affordable housing, manufacturing, workforce, training, education. Those all play a role in allowing us to be able to meet the President's priorities, so be cohesive about it. Don't let it, don't let it just linger because we need this funding to start moving. I think that we're also seeing funding moving. Now that we have a budget with Congress, the legacy programs are gonna be able to move forward. Um, we're still seeing some pause in anything that was EGA, Infrastructure and Investment Dobbs Act, or IRA, but we are hoping that those move forward. The IRA tax credits are really important for the industries coming in, um, for Section forty-eight C or for the manufacturing credits of forty-five X. So those are really important to keep, but they need to align it with the President's priorities and then just let it move forward. So that's really been kind of our message, um, as we went back to DC, and we had some very good meetings with, with agencies all the way around. Um, and because it's Wyoming and we're gonna play well on the things that this President wants to achieve, they wanted to talk to us, so it was kind of fun. Um, any questions on that message?
Anything from the board? I don't see anything, Drew.
Okay, couple other things. So we're still working on the latest draft and how we're gonna resolve it. So we're still working on the latest draft and how we're gonna resolve it. Um, they don't wanna start over, so we're trying to figure out how we can get the things in the, in the documents that we didn't get in the draft, um, and how we can negotiate that and maneuver it so we're not starting over with a diet process. I'm not sure we can get there without a supplemental, but those things are being discussed at the state level. I don't know which direction would be the best to go. Uh, Thunder Basin, Tubusby, the Thunder Basin, Redlands Prairie Ecosystem Association had their annual meeting last week, and they are in the middle of doing a lot of really neat studies. So I can send that out to you, the studies that they did do, and if there's presentations that you would like to see, um, there are all sorts of things with drought, not just prairie dogs, but other species, um, the effects of using drillers for mapping, things like that, just let me know and I'll make sure that we get all that information to you. Or Commissioner Todd, I'll just forward the links when Dave Peller posts those, and you can, you can share those with anybody that might be interested.
Sounds great.
And then the last thing I have is I just wanted a friendly reminder that the grant management office, third Wyoming funding summit, is going to be held in Riverton at the college, April fourteenth through the seventeenth. It is free, um, but you do need to log on and register, and registrations will be open, I believe, until around the first of April. So if you have anybody from the county or anybody that you know would like to attend, um, please have them log on and register to sign up. We've got a great, we've got a great lineup. Um, the grant writing portion, which will be the fourteenth and fifteenth, is full, um, but there's a waiting list that you can get on, and if we have cancellations, we'll just work our way down the list. And then the Wednesday and Thursday, the sixteenth and seventeenth, are the two days that we're gonna have all of our federal agency partners with us in talking about a lot of different programs. So just a friendly reminder if you're interested, please do not register. And with that, Commissioners, that's all I have for today.
Any questions for Drew? Thank you, Drew. Appreciate everything and the, and the input on the, the grant deal, so.
Okay. Have a great week.
Thank you.
And Becky, I don't think you have any sound online again.
It might be the one that worked, maybe. Okay. Moving on to our Blue Cross Blue Shield plan selection. Anybody want to start with any input on this? So if we go to the county taking the whole increases, about twenty-eight thousand dollars to the county side, a split of fifty-fifty would be about thirteen thousand to the county side, and if, uh, the percent stays the same still, wait a minute, is that right? It's twenty-four thousand? That was three percent, is that what it is? Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
When you had the big increases, what was your, what was your estimate?
We, last two, I believe, we ate it all, you know? And it was pretty substantial. It was a hundred thousand almost, last, the last increase.
Last year.
Yeah. And, which is, uh, I don't know what a pleasure the boards would be, but I'm grateful it's not that much this year, but it's still, um, gonna affect our online if we do the same.
For discussion purposes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the employee tax increase plan.
Hundred percent employed. We have them on the floor for a hundred percent employed increase. Is there a second for discussion purposes?
Oh, second for discussion.
Probably the second at the discussion.
Mr. Chairman? Well, the chairman's taken the big hits, um, in a couple of years. Um, I think it's only behooved that at some point the employee does, too. Um, it is a benefit, that is a very good benefit, and the hit is not near what those other hits were. I just think it's, um, that's what I'm gonna go for.
Yeah, I, uh, I won't disagree with you on that aspect, like, I'm a little bit nervous that it's gonna, we're gonna be coming down to the wire at the end of the year here, and are we gonna have to lay somebody off because of what these new tax measures are gonna do to us? If it's a matter of saving that position for something like this, I would be more in favor of we take it as a whole instead of potentially losing somebody. I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but I don't know. I am concerned. I think we're headed to trouble in times.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'd rather keep the employees and, and instead of paying and then come to a point where we have to make a decision, I think it just, um, is responsible on our part to do this. And then if they, if we could find, and I'll use that word, Ms. Garrett earlier before the meeting, that, you know, we don't kind of use a doze type approach. Um, I'm always looking for us to find a way to, to give some type of salary increase, and this is probably the worst absolute time, we have no idea what the hits are gonna hit. But how, um, how wonderful it would be is if we got through the budget process and we were able to move things over here, eliminate things over here, and reward our employees, but perhaps we couldn't go on travel trips, or we couldn't go, or we couldn't have, um, new equipment in something, but, and, and that's kind of where I'm going on this, is I'd rather protect those employees, they may not get some of the pay.
Yeah, I, I fully agree, potentially like a cost of living increase in some sort.
I just wanted to clarify also, I know we're talking on a couple different terms here, but it's not a decision of whether or not we are, we're choosing to lay anyone off or to absorb the expense as a county. That's, that's not on the hand. We know that our, our budget's going to be tighter in the next year and two. So more or less proactively engaging with, with the shared responsibility of, of this added expense is, is showing our movement on the front side that, that we are anticipating a tight budget year. But it's not a decision on whether, or whether or not we're gonna lay people off or...
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a, it's a possibility, but it's not a decision to make right now.
I have a question, maybe an idea here. You know, we're going into this budget process, it's gonna be coming up, if all of a sudden we don't take a hit as bad as we could, could we go back as board and absorb the three percent and give it back to them? You know, would that, at budget time, make that decision? If the money's gonna be there?
I think you could, like a cost of living increase?
Yeah, something like that. You know, I would keep that in mind, like, hey, you know, it wasn't as bad as we anticipated, hey, we can give you that, you know, we can absorb if, if the budget allows for it, kind of a deal. Is the cost of living increase or...
Well, one thing, I, uh, attended that meeting with Mr. Nine, and Marty was there. You know, they're asking us to tighten our belt. Well, we have to tighten our belt, we gotta tighten it, you know? If they're not wanting us to get the taxes that, that we were getting by tightening that belt, we may have to tighten our belt in this end in here, too. It's just an appropriate thing to do, I think, for now, until we know where we're sitting. I'm, I'm fully in favor of the motion on the floor.
And then back to that, you know, okay, they can get tax relief on their profit, you know, it's kind of a, a give and take, it's kind of a money shuffle through, you know, we're, we're taking on this end, we're giving it back to you on the other end, kind of a deal, you know? I just, I wish we had a crystal ball to see how this is all gonna play out in, in a year from now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not just a year.
Well, I mean, in a year, we'll have a better idea, but it's a long term.
It's long term.
But in a year from now, we will actually be starting to feel the brunt of it, how bad it's gonna be.
Yes, Mr. Hoover?
And I, another thing that comes to mind for me is, is things like, uh, the chair's office coming in here and asking, begging for our help of, to, to just hire employees, and we were telling them we don't have any money. So I think these are the kind of things we need to look at really closely. And we have, we did absorb those big ones the last couple of years to help our employees. This time, we may not be able to do that.
All for the question?
All for the question, uh, all those in favor of accepting the employees take the three percent increase to the Blue Cross Blue Shield, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have an aye as well. Okay, thank you. Good discussion. Mr. Hershey, you have the floor.
How's everybody doing today?
Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome. Okay, so I will start with the 4H highlights. So lots of exciting things happening. We're 174 youth enrolled in 4H. And as I walked out the door, Christie was like, "We have new 4Hers." So that's exciting.
24, 25.
Oh, yes, we're 25. I'm glad. Yeah. I didn't even catch that last month. That's terrible. So it's really fun when we look at the 50 project areas, when we look at stuff that's happening. Robotics started last Friday and that's just a really fun project. If you guys ever have a chance on a Friday afternoon, they need it for, they're using the USDA Service Center conference room again this year. And just stop by and watch them build those robots and do some progress. Because it truly is amazing with a pile of Lego pieces, what they can do and put together. So they are working towards Showcase Showdown in Laramie in June. We're also gonna do a mini competition with Campbell County this year. Campbell County's got their robotics program up and running and so they actually have their sumo robots ready to go now. So they're excited to, we'll either come here or we'll go there and do just a little mini competition. So I think that, that's gonna be a lot of fun because not all of our kids will go to Laramie for the competition. So that's something that's going on. Shooting sports continues. Next week, we'll see our county shoots for air rifle in Upton and 22 here in Newcastle. Annual transition, the 30th and 31st to archery. And we have, I don't know, there's 80-ish kids across all the shooting sports disciplines, so that's really exciting. Crochet club has been probably the hottest item I have offered all spring. It is crazy. I literally thought if we had three or four kids sign up, we would be going great guns. I think they have 14 or 15 kids there last Wednesday night for crochet club. Like, they just love it. So that's been a really fun one. I'm headed to Upton tonight for clover bugs and then here on Thursday. And then our dog, dog project meetings are off to a huge start. Three weeks ago, I think, was the first one. They had 20 dogs. And then our dog, dog project meetings are off to a huge start. Three weeks ago, I think, was the first one. They had 20 dogs and kids there. And so they promptly decided we needed to rearrange and kind of separate them out as to skill level and age level so that we weren't quite 20 dogs chaotic all at the same time. So good problems to try to figure out. I have some really fun volunteer trainings coming up in the next couple of weeks. The 4H educator out of Sheridan County is offering this content connections statewide. And we're gonna meet just at the extension office. Anybody that wants to jump on or they can jump on online via Zoom and just talk about planning and teaching those content-based project meetings. And I think a lot of times people are like, "Oh, my gosh, I don't know. Like, I'd love to help, but I don't want to be in charge. I don't want to plan." And it's kind of like the crocheting, show up with a few supplies, a box of yarn, and it's amazing what happens. And then the second one, Christie Liff is gonna teach one called In Plain Sight. And she's got some interactive training tools and then just some conversation about youth substance of use. And just being aware, our volunteers spend a lot of time with the kids and I just want them to have some skills and some knowledge to go with that. I got to participate in the Western Region 4H Institute in Las Vegas in February, so that was five days. There was a little over 100 educators from the 13 western states. We had some great workshops, lots of information. They talked a lot about the Beyond Ready campaign, which is what 4H is going towards. And the number that really stuck out to me was 80 to 85% of the jobs that youth are going to be filling in the next five to 10 years haven't been invented yet. And I was like, that is really crazy when we think about how much the world is gonna change in that next five to 10 years with AI, with just all the different things, how our kids are gonna have to adapt to that. So how are we giving them the life skills and the excitement for new and exciting things to fill those positions? And part of Western 4H Institute, they also created cohorts based upon how we answered questions heading into that training. And our cohorts will actually meet throughout 2025 and beyond. Our state 4H program leader went to institute in her first year as an educator. So that was, I think she told me six years ago, and her cohort still meets and collaborates and does some really cool stuff. So I'm excited about that, just those connections from all the western United States that we now have. And then the next big training is our annual 4H Spring Training. The shirts in Pinedale. So a lot of professional development and then just a lot of getting ready for all the upcoming events that are happening this summer. So that's happening. And then just looking ahead, we're looking at National Volunteer Week and then Showcase Showdown 4H Camp, State Shoot, County Fair, all of those things. And just lots of fun pictures of the kids being really active in all the 4H events that have been happening. And then, as everybody is aware, with Vicky and I doing kind of the switch of I'm the county coordinator. Now, I actually just was in Laramie last week for a county coordinator boot camp. So it's the first big county coordinator training they've had Extension wide in probably six or eight years. So it's a really good two days of just meeting with the county coordinators from all 23 counties and administration and talking about all of the different aspects of the county coordinator position kind of on top of my 4H duties. So a lot of just talking about building those relationships and working cooperatively with our commissioners and making sure that Extension is meeting the needs within our community. So if anybody has any questions about that aspect, I'm happy to share. We head to Gillette next week for the Northeast Region meeting. So Extension has kind of re, kind of drawn the borders of our regions. And this is the first time we'll have met regionally in probably five or six years as well. So I'm excited for that, to see where that meeting is gonna talk about. And we are talking about a lot of volunteer training and that kind of stuff, doing them more regionally, which will give everybody a little more access to things like that. So the pesticide class was held February 24th. We had 25 people from Weston County there. So that's obviously a very needed thing that we offer. And if you didn't get to the class and you still need your private pesticide license, you can always stop by the Extension Office and take the exam there. Christie and everything can get you set up and anybody through that process as well. And then I met with a potential AmeriCorps volunteer yesterday. So that is provided by the, provided by UW Extension. And we're looking at 450 hours of work that this volunteer will provide for us. Looking at starting by the very end of May and then probably wrapping up by the first of September when they go back to school. So that's an exciting piece that they're gonna hopefully work a lot on, Extension projects. And then we're gonna partner a little bit with Caleb Carter at the National Resource District and do some with the community garden and farmers market. So excited there. And then just some information about, Vicky's got her cooking classes going. The Community Vitality and Health Team is really focusing on these Wyoming walks. So a fun way to meet and do a walk while you learn something. So Vicky's got one in the works that, there'll be one in Upton and then one in Newcastle as the weather gets nicer. And then this Inspire Wyoming, Inspire You workshop, she is working with Weston County Health Services. And it's gonna be like a day-long kind of retreat. And Vicky's hoping it'll be based on like the caregiver role. And so providing some resources and support to those that are in that caregiver role in Weston County. And then we did just get our seeds for the grow a little extra program through the Sensible Nutrition Program. So feel free, if you're gonna grow a garden this summer, stop by. I think there's six varieties of seeds that are just right at the office. And then it's part of the Wyoming Hunger Initiative through Jenny Gordon's office with the goal that everybody would donate a little produce back. So that produce can be dropped off at our office or the bread office or the food pantry in Upton. So that produce stays local. But just everybody that maybe is already growing your garden, sometimes we have a lot of it, some excess. So sharing that with our neighbors. So, and then there's the website for the No Hunger Initiative if you're looking. And another piece of that is that Fair to Work program that 4H does at County Fair. So No Hunger Initiative buys one of the kids' extra 4H market hogs and then that gets donated back into Weston County as well. So it's a really fun partnership with Jenny Gordon's office. So any questions about what is happening at the Extension Office this month?
I know my wife will donate produce to the bread office at times and then people just, they'll, they love it when they get fresh produce donated there.
Yes.
And that, reach out to anybody. If you got extra produce in your garden coming in, those people just, they love it.
Yeah. And we're happy to be that facilitator to, because sometimes the bread office, like, those hours are a little more difficult, like if you're coming in at other times. So we're happy to be that stopping point as well. So it's kind of a cool program. And some of the counties, like Lingle at Saratoga, so the south, whatever, the Extension Research Facility there, they do, they grow potatoes. And so then CNP goes and helps pick. And they donated like 17,000 pounds of potatoes to the food bank, food banks across the state too last year. So it's just a really fun way to get everybody involved a little bit in that. And fresh produce is all, and it's expensive. So it's nice to have that opportunity.
Well, you're busy lighting. We certainly appreciate you, everything you do.
It's fun. So, but yeah, if there's anything you guys are interested in us bringing to Weston County that our educators can offer, just reach out, let me know. We're happy to make those connections. That was the one, what we talked about, some of the county coordinator boot camp is the Plant Sciences Department. Actually hired four hires in the last couple of months that have more than 50% Extension appointment. So the Plant Sciences Diagnostic Lab is coming back online here in the next, soon. She wasn't, they're still kind of putting the lab back together. But we will have the opportunity to then take pictures or plant samples and send them to UW for diagnostics. So if we have the sick trees or crops that are having issues, we have four really great resources now. So we got the opportunity to meet all of them and they're super excited. But Yell did her, I wanna say her masters and part of her, or maybe her PhD at UW and then has worked in Georgia for the last 20 years. And so she was handing out her cellphone and she was like, "Everybody's joking and being like, 'No, no, you don't wanna give everybody your cellphone number.'" And she's like, "There's more people in the one county in Georgia than there is in the whole state of Wyoming." She goes, "I'm not worried if the whole state has my cellphone number and I diagnose plant problems." So that was kind of exciting to have that aspect coming back on because that's something we get a lot of questions about. So to have those resources is great.
Karen.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your day.
You too.
Thank you.
Ms. Ricky Kais, you're through trial budget adjustment. Which mine, I don't really look at. This one's gonna be...
And also, I don't know if we can discuss it today or not, I am in the fold for my special attorney fees as well. And I'm gonna have more invoices submitted for that.
This is two weeks old.
Can I look at it?
Yeah, absolutely.
I listened to this time.
You're not starting, you're not starting off on a very good foot.
I know, I'm so sorry. I gotta do it, I gotta do it. So this line item is gonna, it's negative 5,000? Okay.
I think a couple, a couple thousand.
5,000.
And then? This one, we always pay these after the trial. Like the adjustment. Or that's how we do it before.
So...
Your model?
So witnesses, so it's gonna come out at 1.6 and I only have 19.
Right here.
And it's gonna be way more than that. And like I said, that special attorney account, I'm negative 5,000. I do believe now.
So before you do, can we pay until we know what it's gonna be without knowing what it's gonna be and throwing 5,000 in it just to bring her back to zero? Right now or?
So on the court-appointed attorney one, the previous year, there was 100,000 in there for Tina and she only spent 80,000. So when we did the budget, we didn't give her that extra 20,000 because you don't give extra money if it's not spent. Well, this year, of course, there was way more jury trials than last year. So she, the court-appointed attorneys did.
No, it shouldn't have.
This one that you're asking, you're over the 5,000.
Just the attorneys.
That was the 100,000. And so there was 20,000 extra the previous year. So we don't put the extra money in when we do the budget. And so that's why she was over, she's over this year because there was more court-appointed attorneys than the previous year.
All righty.
So Ricky, do you know how many, how many jury trials are there any that have?
That's so unpredictable.
You got it pretty far out there on the calendar though.
Yeah. A lot of them do settle.
Some settle. I understand that.
Yeah. Right now, I think we have 10 on my schedule. And we have, I think, three new cases coming up in Circuit Court.
So like on some of these court-appointed attorneys, some of those family members that we're paying these fees for, is it the attorney's responsibility to try to recoup any of that money?
It would be our judges.
And are they ever?
Depending on, because it depends on what they, you know, make. That is up to them. I would definitely reach out to them and see what they determine. I don't know. I don't, I know, like on an order, it'll say, you know, pay 125,000.
Irrestic, sugar.
But if anything happens to them, if they don't pay that, I don't, I don't know. I would have to contact the county attorney's office with that as well.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Pay 125,000.
Irrestic, sugar.
But if anything happens to them, if they don't pay that, I don't, I don't know. I would have to contact the county attorney's office with that as well.
Sorry, somebody else.
But that's one, like what Commissioner Wagner was saying, it's... But that's one like what Commissioner Wagner was saying, it's
It's an unfunded mandate.
Yeah, I can't tell you, you know, I can't say I have twenty cases this year. I might have a hundred twenty next year. You know, it's so out there.
Yes, why?
So perhaps it'd be, I use that word a lot, so I'm gonna quit. Perhaps we could bring the judges in again. We did that one time.
Judge Perry came in.
Yep, yep, yep.
Absolutely.
And just as a reminder from this board to please try, this is a reminder. I know he does. I am not saying that. It just needs to be a reminder of these things are getting tight.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
We need a little more effort perhaps. So if we could bring him in.
Judge Perry retired. I can maybe reach out. I have four judges, you know, may reach out to Costano where he leaves as the president. So reach out to him and see if he's willing definitely to come in. Speak with you guys.
Well, first, two weeks ago, we spent, we signed vouchers for over thirteen thousand for court-appointed attorneys.
And that's what they do is you, you see, like last year, we didn't have any abuse neglect. Well, this year where there's an increase in it. I can't, I can't tell you. It's so unpredictable. And you know, maybe a parent wants one, but the other one doesn't want one or the girls want one. So it's unpredictable. And with that jury trial coming, that's gonna.
A bunch of time, could you bring us like two or three years? I mean, we could go back and look ourselves, but could you bring us the money that was, was was budgeted, how much was put back so at the end? So that we can get ourselves an average of, because you're gonna have some type of average. I understand there may be an increase. We can get to that. But the understanding that perhaps that leaving the twenty thousand and to get rolled back is probably the better plan that we have, just so we know. So you might had a I'm gonna put the air quotes up, a good year last year. But if you could give us a general average.
I know in twenty twenty-one, I first started, Tina had the same issue with the special attorney fees as well. She was super in the hole.
Well, that went really crazy that year.
Yeah.
Because we all were crazy.
I remember we were, we budgeted quite a bit less and then we started increasing significantly after.
I was gonna say, looking back, I mean, I was looking at two of fifteen and it was twenty-five thousand. It was in that, you know? Now we're at a hundred thousand and that's not even budgeted.
Let's say something for mental health in Weston County isn't getting better.
Can you tell, how much foreshadowing do you have as far as how the year is going to be laid out? Do you know in advance?
None.
Is short-term?
Exactly. You know, it depends on, it's all in the county attorney's hands.
Question. Do you have a general feel of, and I know this is hard for you, but sometimes that these, these go through a certain point. You, you can develop a pattern, everything. Then it gets to this point and then it gets settled. And we've already called the jury and all that and it's are you tending to get a feel? I mean, you've only been here for a little while. Are you? So could that be put in here a little that we'd have some idea?
I, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that because then it would backfire.
Of course.
So just from working up there, yeah, I, I don't know how cases go, but I'm not gonna say, no, this one's not going. And then all of a sudden I have a huge trial coming. Is that what you're asking me, I guess?
It is. I just have, I, I've noticed a pattern just in, in, you know, I'm not up there. But just what you hear, it goes so far and then all of a sudden all the juries call and then they settle and I'm
Went into that quite a few times.
Yes, exactly. That's what I'm saying.
But knowing my luck, it'd be one of them, oh yeah, this one isn't gonna go. And then all of a sudden I have to hurry up and get a jury trial going.
So instead, so instead of running something else in her budget into the red, which she doesn't have enough in any lifetime, we need to use financial admin lines to adjust her.
And that fourteen thousand or fifteen thousand in the quote is, that's I don't wanna say super high, but that's just saying that everybody's traveling from Upton coming here every day. I don't foresee that happening, but that's not including like I have to provide snacks. And I'm not gonna go above and beyond, obviously, but let's say they deliberate for four days. Well, I have to provide lunch and dinner for them as well. And that's not including in that budget as well.
And that's on the jurors, the jury line item?
Yes, that's the fifteen thousand. So that's on the high end, but there's also stuff not in there. Yeah. Yes. So yeah, so it says it on there too. They go more than five days, which we're planning more than five days. Their fee gets bumped up to fifty dollars. And that's something I was supposed to touch base with Judge Costano? I have not yet, but I will. So I mean, that's not including that in that either.
That's true.
Well, there is a difference in the fact that you do know when you're gonna go travel somewhere, but there, I mean, you do plan those things. You don't necessarily plan a jury and we've gone through that on several years of you know, it is an estimate, what we do. So there's, there's somewhat of a difference. If you intentionally go and decide you're gonna go with this this convention or this, they all, and you know that you're lying on, they're lending money in it, that's a little different. Trials and this unfunded mandate of these court-appointed attorneys is a real bind on, on any county. And I'm not sure how all of them can do it, even the poor ones like on our eastern side. So I guess we, we ask that you do the best you can at budget terms. And hope for the best, but I think you're right. If you, do you have one planned? I mean, do you have a jury trial coming up?
Which day first?
Holy mackerel.
Is that not included in there?
I don't know. And she, this might not have came through on here. You know, it might have on here.
You gave it to us.
Oh, okay.
You gave it.
Oh, yeah. This jury trial
This one is.
Is starting March thirty-first.
Oh, I just got one, one, I don't.
I might have not put, I'm sorry.
I don't have quite a date. I don't know if, you know, January eleventh, two hundred and three, I don't.
That's a statue.
Sorry. But no, I have a jury trial starting March thirty-first. That is referring all of the bid in front of you.
And what we did when Tina did them, because these will be prepaid, so the jurors don't have to wait. That way we know exactly how much. So I don't know if you guys want to pay out of a specific account rather than move it into our account.
I don't have a problem with putting it in her account because that way it is
Understood.
Understood what the cost is. I think we've run into that just now with the auditor, that not understanding where it came from. So I think this is appropriate to put it back in the account so that it can be, it can be tracked. Putting it in other things ends up causing us to do the thing that just happened is that we don't always budget enough because it came out of a different account.
And that's not included in the court.
It's two different things.
Two separate things.
Over the twenty thousand dollars? Potentially.
I would assume so, yeah. I hate sense. I go personal. It's so unpredictable.
Yeah. Few months, I think we're looking at about twenty grand.
Twenty grand in both accounts or?
No, fifteen to your jurors potentially. Not knowing what it's gonna cost and then if I have to say you're short in here.
And I would have more vouchers come in for that.
Starting in the hole and still spending for the next
So here's the bottom one. Do we do five adjustments or do we, what do you want? What does the board want to do?
So what you're telling us, you already have a jury trial that could potentially be this fourteen thousand dollars. You've already had one. It's your March thirty-first one.
March thirty-first one, correct.
You haven't had it yet, so you don't have vouchers coming in.
Correct, correct. I was just giving you guys, I guess, a little heads up.
Give us, Mr. Chairman. Give us another heads up. I think we have to pay this one. I have no problem if you have a jury trial. Give us a heads up if this doesn't end up in a jury trial. We're okay. You're fine. Right?
Yeah, well, it's basically.
I'm air quoting, that's fine.
Minus the court-appointed attorney.
So I'm just talking about this one right now, the court-appointed. Tell me your feelings on what the court-appointed. Could this trial coming up have court? Why do you have to put the word court in front of that? Because I took one. May it have those attorneys?
No.
Not? Gonna have that?
Nope. Don't try the council.
So we're okay?
Court-appointed is for abuse and neglect cases. Court-appointed attorneys for juvenile cases. So I'm already five thousand dollars in the hole in that. But I'm gonna have invoices coming for every month. So may I say?
So give us an idea what those are.
I can try. It's so unpredictable because it depends on how much they talk to their clients. It depends on.
I understand that. I understand that. So give us, you have to have some general idea.
I can go back and look.
That's what I was asking.
So she's not quite in the hole yet. It's because a bill came from the state for twenty thousand dollars for the court-appointed attorney fee for the year.
For criminals.
Yes, and that's gonna put her over in that account.
But I looked and Tina paid the, there was like a couple hundred dollars off. She paid the twenty thousand dollars last year too. It's an occurring every year bill.
It's a yearly bill and that one has not been paid yet because it hasn't become, came before you guys yet. And that's a twenty thousand dollar bill.
That puts her to five thousand.
That's what's going to put her over.
But if she can look back at two or three months in the past, six months, and get an idea of what it's running here per month, then maybe we can figure out an adjustment based on that scenario.
So did you take into account the twenty thousand that you knew was gonna happen in this bill, in this budget?
Did I take into account? No.
That would be the.
I was gonna say, I, I kinda got handed.
Right.
I think what Becky did was when the eighty, less than eighty thousand was spent last year, she that was taken into account that it might be somewhere to that.
Well, and that was taken out last year.
No, it's that's what I, I don't wanna tell. But that count fluctuates so much. I, I, yeah, I might have twenty thousand in it, but now we're in the situation we're in now.
And she has tons in there now.
So that bill came through. And that bill was paid every year though, so I don't under, and I live back.
That's, that's my question, yeah.
But it depends on the cases I get.
Same situation that shares in with medical expenses.
Mm-hmm. Exactly. You just don't know.
Except.
Yes.
So on the twenty thousand, is there a certain time that comes through?
It's the same.
Same time all the time?
Yeah. So I think Tina about it for March ninth last year.
Okay, if you could come in front of us in a couple of weeks and give us a heads up.
So. When's the next?
The first, I believe.
I'll be in a jury trial that I can try to come down, but.
Could you get numbers of Becky?
Absolutely. I'll email them to you guys, but yeah, starting March thirty-first, I won't. It's gonna be.
So kind of satisfied board, we're trying to attempt to fix the problem?
Well, and clearly we're not blaming you. That like, like the chairman said, we have the same problem with the jail expenses. We don't know.
Unpredictable.
From literally day to day, you don't know. And they don't either. So it's just something we have to deal with.
I say I try not to spend more. Yeah. Don't spend money.
Those, those jury trial fees, once, will those start accumulating prior to the first?
So it'll start the thirty-first.
That's when those jury trial?
That's when I'll have all those.
Okay. And then, so we have time then I think to.
They're prepaid.
Yeah, that's my question. We have time to prepare a resolution for two weeks from now if we need it. If we don't need it, we don't do it. Correct?
So it's lasted for ten days.
So it could be April.
Before I put those vouchers in. Or soon, just a place.
So we have time. Okay.
She won't know who's on or.
Exactly. I won't, you know, mileage, nothing like that until a jury gets selected.
Wow. Anything else?
I appreciate your efficiencies too, when someone comes and has to snuggle the budget up and working with friends. I know you're not a spender, so thank you.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. More good news.
Sorry.
Okay. I would hate to be in your position.
So Gilbert's not coming to talk about the brick grant. He said other people were gonna talk about the economic development for.
Before we jump to that, I got a quick question. That brick grant is, it was twenty-five percent, right? It was county?
It was.
Yeah. Could there be made that that's kind of a courthouse security thing? And that's where we could find those funds? Because there's, we haven't spent a dime out of that. There's twenty-six thousand dollars sitting in that account if we choose to go down that road. I think we still have time based on things, but might be some money available.
I had a couple of questions too, just based on that. And I don't know with Gilbert not being here, but I'm hoping that the, and you and I talked about this a little bit, but I'm hoping that the server is on a uninterrupted power source. My feeling isn't that it's not if it had a blip and somebody had come over here. It would be very smart on our part to buy a uninterrupted power source for that server. Probably go a higher battery than you know, that some of us have on our refrigerators and stuff, you know, maybe not one hour, but maybe four hours so that somebody can get to it. Have that and then in my research, even if it's very important, I'm not saying it's not, that it should also have a generator backup. But without the dispatch at the sheriff's office, it would be interesting to know if we could hook onto that generator because there's no longer dispatch on it. And that would be a power, a power drain and may not have the room for it. I'd like to have those ideas explored. I'd also like to have a survey done of what wattage needs to be obtained with a, I mean, if it's overkill, it seems so.
Yeah, it might be cheaper to run the wire over here than just.
On the server backup, my understanding was there is a backup for it, but this power outage is long enough that that battery drained down on our service.
And when you give it?
It's there. It just was the power outage was long enough that it didn't maintain it.
Some of those things, when, when Brian was talking about that generator, he said that it was plenty blip big. I remember him using that little words for the sheriff's department, but what I was wondering is what we're concerned about. I understand if, if we've got all the ACs running and microwaves or something along those lines, it's probably going to drain too much. Is there, is there a setup to where we can utilize that generator to the capacity of utilizing the power that we need? Maybe if there's a transfer switch that would, if the ACs were on and we had a power outage, it would leave the ACs off, but continue to power up the building. I'm sure that there's electricians that would, that would wire it that way rather than stepping into you know, a whole nother expense for when you got the maintenance of the generator. Generators are worthless until you need them. And they add, they add a decent amount of maintenance. So something like that to maybe consider on, on powering up our basics.
Yeah, we could get them on a dedicated circuit.
And so if we're at that thing, I'm not sure you're gonna worry about air conditioning. You know, really. I think there'd be, heating might be different if we had a cold type of snap because there's things we have to save, like water and that type of thing. But the luxury of air conditioning might be something we might be putting off to a side if we're in that type of emergency and get to what is necessary. So I like that idea if we could get. So, um, I like that idea if we could get, even if we could just get, I don't know, surveys, the right word.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop, certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
But a luxury of air conditioning might be something we might be putting off to a side if we're in that type of emergency and get to what is necessary. So, um, I like that idea if we could get, even if we could just get, I don't know, surveys, the right word. I'm not sure about the, if I'm using the correct terminology, but to understand if...
We walked, uh, last night, we had a meeting at the city hall. I walked by that generator last night and there's a, eh, it might be a thousand gallon propane tank sitting next to us. And I'm curious even what the runtime would be if that's a propane generator and it's not hooked up to natural gas.
It's dual fuel.
Is it?
That, that propane tanks are the case, and the natural gas service, they can go on.
All right, a lot of questions there, so.
Yes.
Sorry, guys. Um, anything else on that?
No.
Okay, moving on to economic development board.
Hello.
Hello.
I feel like I just saw you guys.
Yeah.
Um, well, I came to, um, introduce the Newcastle Economic Development Board. Um, as you heard last night, um, we wanted to officially publicize, um, introduce who we are. Um, the Newcastle Economic Development Board has been meeting for, uh, almost six months now. Um, and we wanted to publicly announce that we are here. Um, we are going to be an independent board of seven. Uh, we have six members right now with one spot available. We have an invitation out to an individual, but if anybody's interested, they're welcome to meet with us. Um, the six that are on the board right now are myself, Gilbert Nelson, uh, Kobe, uh, Kobe Pishati, um, Dan Fields, um, John Butts, and Holly Horton. Um, we are looking at getting our 501(c)(3). Uh, we're working on a Facebook page and a website at the moment. Um, we have reached out to Upton's Economic Development, um, group as we've been kind of doing some research and speaking with, um, the Wyoming Business Council. And we like a lot of stuff that we saw with theirs, and we wanna kinda, um, work with them, obviously, and, uh, look at making not just Newcastle great, but Weston County great. And so, uh, we're just waiting to hear back from Cass Bishop from, from Upton and try to see what we can do to work together, um, as well as individually. Um, but we just wanted to get out there who we are and that we're here and, um, you know, we wanna get ideas, um, from people, what, uh, what we can start working on or looking at. Uh, but to give you a little bit of an idea of where we're at, we are, um, working on, um, with the museum, um, in addition to the museum, a dinosaur museum here in Newcastle. Uh, we are, have kind of like a, a flat plan. Um, we've had an engineer work with Cindy Dice Group, um, getting that together so we can start working on grants. And we've talked with a lot of, um, people in Weston County and, uh, close to Weston County that do have a lot of dinosaurs, um, finds on their property, uh, to help get that museum up and going. Um, because a lot of them already have dinosaurs in larger museums, in bigger cities, in bigger, in other states. It's like, why aren't we utilizing that here? Uh, we also are working, um, with, um, an investment group on an industrial park for, for Weston County. Um, and I'm pretty excited about that one if we can get that to come through because then we'll have areas for businesses to come in. Um, may it be a shovelled-ready, uh, area or buildings already for them to move into and start. Um, so with that, um, we'll have more jobs and things to that factor. We did hear, um, a rumor, that's why we wanna talk with, um, Upton Economic Development about housing. We've heard that there might possibly be a housing development in the works somewhere, so we wanna make sure that we coordinate and, you know, find out what their plans are because what may not be suitable for us could be suitable for them. So, um, we have reached, we're reaching out to surrounding areas as well. Um, gonna be going to an A2A workshop, um, that Randy Harlow with the Wyoming Business Council, um, introduced us to in September in Ruperton. So, um, this, I think, is gonna be a really good start, especially with, you guys were talking about earlier about the property taxes being cut, um, bringing some extra revenue into, into Weston County. But we just wanted to get out there and let you know who we are. And we'll, um, probably stay in contact, maybe get on the agenda once a quarter, um, while we're getting started, just to keep everybody updated on where we're at and keep ourselves accountable as well as we try to get this venture going. That's all I got.
Is that the Nyman property that you're considering for the industrial park?
I'm not at Ruperton.
You can't say. I'll use my imagination.
Okay.
Uh, last night, it was, it was fun listening to you discuss some of that stuff. It looked like you guys are looking forward to a countywide initiative that I am fully in support of and, and if, I think it would be of Upton too. I mean, they've really gone full gangbusters with their development board. Any way they could help, it'd be great.
Yeah, I, I really liked...
If you guys have a ground floor for it.
Yeah, I really liked watching, um, when Jennifer was there with the economic development. I talked with her quite a bit and have always been, like, interested, but been pretty busy on my own, um, agendas and personal lives, um, to, to kind of go forward. Um, but then just to watch Upton grow and the things that they've been doing. And, um, there's a lot of stuff I'd like to, to mirror, especially with their committees. Um, so I just wanna kinda work with them and, and get permission with them on a couple of the committees before we kind of report with them, so there's not like a, oh, they did this and, and stuff to that after. And I really want it to be, um, a trusting, game environment so that we can feed off each other and help each other because with, with everything that's going on in the world and, and especially in our state and what the property is being cut, I mean, it's, this can be detrimental, especially to our small, uh, small mom-and-pop businesses uh, because they're gonna get hit with, with the taxes. And so, you know, make sure that, you know, we can preserve and, and save.
That's great. I, uh, think that there's ways the county can help in the long run. If there's assistance with roads and, and, you know, that one percent sales tax opportunity, if we can find something to assist and work together with you guys, that'd be great.
I know that, uh, like when, uh, was it Browning? Not Browning, but in Sherb...
Winchester?
Yeah, not Winchester.
Wetherby.
Wetherby, yeah.
When, um, the, the city pretty much come together and they had, they've got like a business plan. You know, if you've got some type of, uh, of an opportunity to be had in this region, uh, there's been some things like Project Turbo and things that we kinda came together and discussed some things before, but, um, consideration of, of a business incentive on, on something like that. I don't know if that's...
Yeah, we, we kinda, um, talked about that, um, talking, you know, we're gonna be reaching out to Powder Wether, um, Black House Energy, um, you know, uh, just a lot of those resources, uh, range. Um, and I, I've been getting some positive feedback from some of the people that I've talked to in those companies that are reaching out to hire us and, and passing that information on. So the networking is, is really good there. Um, we've even reached out to just people in the past, uh, with the whole rare earth. Um, so there's some hopeful stuff there that could help with the industrial park. Um, so I think there's some, there's a lot of light at the end of the tunnel, let's just say. So, um, I'm a big dreamer and, um, I always look at the goals, not the obstacles. So if, uh, we can just, you know, reach those goals, I think there's, there's gonna be some great things to...
Appreciate it, man.
Thank you.
Okay. Fair board.
Well, uh, good news. We asked for forty-five minutes. I really doubt it's gonna take forty-five minutes.
I'm gonna... Just pass one down.
I'm not looking forward.
Yeah.
I've got, I can't give these guys, I think they're all there. Here, you all have two, so I don't know. They keep that one. Which one do you think is maintenance?
I have, uh, part-time. This one's maintenance. I have a mall.
You got a mall?
I've got a mall, okay. I got two, I got office person. You guys spell personnel differently.
Well, I'm sorry, I can't spell. These are just rough crap.
I got office, part-time, and maintenance. Thank you.
So, the reason we ask for it happens is we are eager to, uh, well, in previous, uh, meetings, um, you guys request this kind of brief, you know, the handbook and stuff. We, uh, thought we had our own handbook and not using yours. Um, so the reason we ask for it happens is just so we can, we know we have the time, get it all hammered out, get it done, get it behind us. We got, we and you guys have a lot of other stuff to do. But the, the basis consensus, consensus from the board is you guys, the county handbook is not bad. It works, it's, it's good, except for a few features. Like the fairgrounds, we, on a weekend, I do holidays like Memorial Day, Labor Day. I mean, those are, are the constant events, really have to work.
I think we prefer you use our, um, handbook, understanding that there is gonna be some tweaks and that we'd be a good place to bring that to us here. Go ahead, Mark.
So when, the first one went through when we were involved several years ago, um, it was LGLP. So that's an over, that's an umbrella handbook. What you guys can have is a managerial handbook. And so yours can be somewhat different, still within the umbrella.
Okay.
But it would be a managerial.
Sure.
I disagree. Um, not a managerial handbook, but you could do what the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office has an addition to the handbook because they have some rules that they have to follow that don't apply to anyone else. So you could just have, um, just an addition.
Okay, uh, with our job descriptions, um, could we put in each job description the differences? With, I mean, the...
That's what we were kinda, what we were thinking was, um, use your guys' handbook if, like, our job descriptions can kind of narrow some of that stuff down, like the holidays, uh, the overtime pay, your manager, um, things of, things of that nature.
So, I'll go back to when we were involved again. Each department had, had, and I'm gonna use the term that the LGLP used, was managerial. So there were different things for each one of them. So they had different aspects, like the assessor had a different rule for what they did. This one had a different rule, and it just explained that out, what that did in difference too. Um, I think you'd have to go back and ask LGLP of what would cover by the time you got to some of those. I think that has to, I mean, that was gone through LGP several times to get those two coordinated. And a lot of times, um, that each department decided, we won't have one, we'll just follow the big book.
And I think this is a good, sorry.
I think it's great.
I think this is a good start. So this gives us the opportunity to produce your views. And then, I think as long as LGLP or none of the board has an issue with you following this and us knowing that that's what you're following, I think that's great.
So in other words, we need to send these or job descriptions?
It would be a matter of being non-exempt or exempt. And your person would be, um, wouldn't have overtime and would have to work holidays. So they'd be exempt, right? They, they would be, they'd get a monthly salary, not hourly. They don't get overtime. And then, and they don't have set hours because they have to work when they have to work. So that's the difference.
The issue with sending that to LGLP is they didn't create our most recent handbook. So I think you...
They weren't very helpful.
Would be better off getting this in front of, uh...
But they did.
They said it was okay.
Two years.
And that's something that I don't know. I mean, LGLP will...
Yeah.
I mean, everything I've researched into, um, be really hard to get our employee, even if, like, it's a full-time manager position, uh, as an exempt employee. And so, that follows into, uh, we gotta do comp time. Which, um, I've got a brand-new understanding of comp time. A lot more understanding than us enough about it, but, um, which I'm fine with comp time. It is, take, before you take vacation and, uh, kind of work with that, but, um... The, the main thing is we're just working on saving the money, squeezing the money down what we do have, on that kind of stuff. Like if we hire somebody in, um, July, say, for example, and they rack up a bunch of comp time, vacation and stuff, and we're on a use-it-or-lose-it basis by the end of their year, budget year, um, uh... But if they, you know, they come to us and quit in May or something, and we follow this comp time or vacation time, we just, we don't have to write, write a check like that.
Well, that's the struggle that we had when we did that the first time. I mean, that was quite a struggle because we had an issue that cost this county a lot of money. And so we went through the effort of going to who was gonna defend us and all that. So my, I guess my question to you is when you did your second handbook, who's defending you? Who's defending you on that handbook? Okay, pardon, pardon what I had to say.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah, it's your county attorney.
Would it be smart on our part to have someone so that we are defending? I'm at a loss.
Well, if LGLP still uses, are they approved?
Then they better know what is in the book. They do.
They didn't?
They approved it.
They approved it?
Yes, they looked at it, yes.
I think so, they didn't look at it.
Yes, they did.
Why don't you ask them? That'd be a good question to ask them.
It'd be a good question to ask them.
We talked to them and they did.
Uh, if we get a letter approving it, that'd be awesome.
They can't, they can't approve...
Let's ask them, how about that?
We did ask them.
I'm asking you again.
Asked them on the phone, and they can't officially approve something. They can give you advice as to how to write it.
Okay. Times change.
Yeah, no problem, reach them, I told them about it.
Thank you.
Get an answer, and that's a vehicle.
We're just trying to protect everyone.
Yeah.
And you guys included. But these, we came up with these job descriptions and we wanted to...
But, these are, we came up with these job descriptions and we wanted, we brought them to you guys so they can work together to come up with a great one.
I have a question because this came up, this has come up.
What?
As to the manager being their employee or a county employee. And I think that's something that we have to decide before the hiring's done because, um, if we put it on them, um, that puts the responsibility of all the taxes and the insurance and everything on them. And, and it, to me, we have, we have a manager, you know, here that's a county employee, the fair board's under us, but then we, we make them take care of that person. I, I feel like it's, it's not the way to do it, I think. And, and it, to me, we have, we have a manager, you know, here that's a county employee, the fair board's under us, but then we, we make them take care of that person. I, I feel like it's, it's not the way to do it. I think, but either way, I think it's something we need to decide.
Ideally, in my opinion, it would go to a similar situation to what we do with Mallow. And, um, because we haven't had that opportunity yet with this, I would prefer that it went that direction too. Like, you guys have full purview, like, I never hear from you unless there's issues. You know, I, I don't wanna be in the middle of it either. I don't, I think the board is probably agreeing with that. It's your employee.
How do you guys do Mallow?
They, we fund them for their employee and his salary, and they have a hundred percent guidance over his time, work, his job. I assume they check off on if he's gonna stay slow in the winter and there's, it's a dry winter and there's no snow to take care of or whatever, maybe it's where he burns his comp time, I don't know. I don't know. The problem with the comp time too, for you folks, can it be turned into a, you got a two-month window to use it or something instead of it? End of the year, it's all gotta be turned up to protect you in an event, I don't know if you can do something like that. But, yeah, we don't, Mallow, their employee is completely hands-off to us.
We pay them.
Yeah, we just hand.
We pay them. The county.
And essentially, that's the way we do employees in Becky's office and all the employees. She, she has full bring with her employees, but they can't increase them. And, I just feel like having their employee done differently, it sets us up for some liability and a lot of miscommunication and possibly financial confusion.
I think, when we, um, kind of took over our, our checkbook and everything this last year, um, the, the, the tracks kinda got crossed with, because, um, we had an employee who was basically hired out of county. There was just some, um, tracks crossed there with who, whose employee it was and stuff. And we're going out, starting out now, where we get a new employee and we hire our employee, um, you know, last year we had the budget for what we had, had been doing in the past, the way we've been doing in the past, and then going forward, like, oh, well, okay, yeah, we got this salary, but then also, we also have the taxes and all that stuff. It wasn't accounted for. So, yeah. Um, so I think going forward, knowing that, going forward, we have that scenario, I think everything would be good.
So, with that being said though, we still approve the employment of that employee, right? That's what we did with Mallow. So, you bring your nomination forward to the board, and then we...
So, you give me...
Yes.
Well, my feeling is, is if we do it the same as Mallow's, then this county pays that employee...
Which is fine.
Outside of that budget, it becomes its own budget. So, we would, we would line item that budget as fairgrounds manager. Um, that becomes, so it's not even in your budget, just so that it isn't, I mean, Mallow puts it in their budget, but they know that they're getting it from...
It's a pass-through.
It's a pass-through. They have to explain what's going on, but they are under the rules of the county, so, all that, so whatever, it would, it would be a good idea to talk to Mallow how they do deal with their, their comp time and all. Now, they have some differences, although they could be very similar if the fairgrounds went back to what they used to be, and in fact that somebody lived at the fairgrounds.
Correct.
You know, 'cause somebody lives at Mallow. The difference is, is Mallow is a red board, and so they are almost self-sufficient, whereas the fairgrounds gets a portion of our mail. So, there is some oversight that comes from this board, that now, although we look at Mallow's, don't get, we're supposed to be looking at Mallow, um, to, to ask questions and, and to ask about capital improvements and, and infrastructure and things like that, whereas you could come a little quicker than, than Mallow could. Mallow goes out and gets grants on their own through the county, so it could, so there's some differences there, but, um, that certainly would be interesting if you could find out what they do on that, on that type of thing, because that's sort of the same thing, except you don't have somebody living there. But those would be the same type of things that would happen that happened at Mallow.
I actually feel a lot more comfortable that if they're being paid by the county that they are county employees. To me, I'm trying to find out, um, maybe, maybe you guys can help me, the advantage of having that individual employed under you instead of being a county employee, that would be a good...
Who does he answer to?
Well, and now I'm getting to that. Where I'm at with this is as long as everything's going good...
Yeah.
It's probably a good setup, right? But when it hits the fan, where does it end up?
Right.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking, it's always a money and a liability issue. Those are the two things that are gonna be, that are come, that are gonna come to the forefront. You'll never have a problem with a flat tire if you got air in all four of them. But when the tire goes flat and it becomes a problem, just like today, where does it end up? It ends up in the county flat. That's why I feel comfortable that, that all county employees, no different than, than the equipment out at the fairgrounds, nobody can run that unless they're a county employee, right? Or affiliated with the county. That's because of a liability issue. We always have liability or monies.
Unless the volunteer thing...
And that would be probably sketchy. But, on, where I'm at with it is, is, is the advantage of having that employee under the blanket of the employed by the fair board so advantageous that it's going to outweigh the possible money or liabilities that could come up? That's a question that I have. So, as long as things are running smoothly, you probably won't have a problem.
Right.
But when the problems come, they're gonna end up here, and then we are going to be kinda out of the know. We're going to want you there, right? Because we're gonna ask questions and say, well, how did you handle this? Or what went down? Because, because we're taking the brunt. So, I feel way more comfortable if they're going to be classified as a county employee, that they are a county employee and they hire on as, as in agreeance to our handbook.
Right.
It just, it makes sense. That's the reason why the handbook's there.
Right.
If we can, if we can just put our handbook out there and say, every department has, has the option to create their own, aside from the one that we have, we might have twenty different handbooks out there that aren't in agreeance to the county handbook. It's just how I see it.
See, if he becomes a county employee, does he answer to you guys?
He does.
No.
Yeah, he's addressed like Mallow.
Just like Mallow does.
Or just like Becky.
He's our employee under your supervision.
That can happen. I think that would be smoother.
And then, you know, you're gonna have to make, there'd be happy amendments or something to the county handbook for your employee because of the hours, the days that we have in our handbook that they're off, you guys can't have that. So, there's gonna have to be a basic amendment or a subsection or something for your employee.
I would highly encourage you to visit with the Mallow Board or go up to a board meeting and see what they do with theirs. And Marty said, I think that would be really advantageous. And, if it, if we do it similar to that, um, there would be about seventy thousand dollars that you were, got last year in salaries that we would put in a line item if it was the same to pay that employee, or, in this case, it's multiple.
Yeah.
That's, that's, uh, like, like, I mean, I'm guessing Mallow's full-time position.
Yes.
We are, um...
Looking at part-time.
We are discussing looking at the option of doing part-time, um, because, shoot, we hire two part-time people, twenty-six bu, twenty-six hours a week, um, way cheaper than you can hire a full-time, and...
With no benefits.
With no benefits, yeah. We go up to, we got twenty-six and thirty, because it's, part-time is under thirty dollars, so.
But I think that's how they fall under us. I, I think that, if that's how that, so that would still protect the county, I mean, just like Commissioner had stated, um, that would still protect the county and not be us, leaving us with an interesting place of, well, why them, why, why weren't you, other things. So, I think you still could put our kind out, so we have a...
Six and a half years or so of sitting here, I've never once seen this board direct the employee at Mallow.
Well, I'm just...
So, if, if you could fall into that kind of similar role, which I think is what you would like, and be most efficient, for sure, I think we should figure that out. And, you know, it'd be great, I think, for everybody. Go ahead, Mr....
And I think if you're looking at, say, two part-time people, I, I, in my, in my mind, you know, I, I would lead back to your board. If your board's really looking at it and thinking that's your best option, then to respect what, you're, you're there seeing what needs to be done and how it's done and the problems you've had and the things that have worked and the things that haven't worked. And if you think that's a better option, um, I don't think anybody, I don't feel like we would be opposed to that.
If that were, say, if that were the structure, these could turn into fair board suggestions or expectations of that employee. That could, that could be, they're going to live by the county handbook, just like it was designed to be, and then you as an overseeing board, obviously, there's going to be specifics that you would expect out of, out of that employee, right?
Let's see, like, right now, Cami's a regular part-time person. I, we do pay, you know, retirement and stuff on her, because she's working more than thirty hours.
Right now.
But when we hire somebody else to come up with, she'll probably go back to just, or not.
So, if we do the setup like Mallow, do we give them a job description?
Absolutely, yes.
We give them the job description.
Yes.
They follow your handbook.
Absolutely.
And then, where do our amendments to the handbook come in with this?
I think you answered what Garrett said, basically, that this is our expectations of...
Just put them in, it's not really a job description, it's what you need to expect to be on that job.
What you can be amended to the handbook, essentially.
For your office.
Yeah.
And you have to base your evaluations on something.
Yes.
So, you're going to have to have some type of document that they signed, understanding so you can base your evaluations on them.
Do you have to pay unemployment on a part-time laborer if you fire them?
Unemployment?
Yeah, part-time, you're there for a check, and then you...
But then it'd be hourly, we wouldn't be worrying about comp time and...
Correct, and that's, that's another, um, we kinda looked at all the options for the part-time deal, it's just, it's...
It's looking like a better deal.
Financially, uh, the part-time deal works out really good. The only downfall of the part-time option would be scheduling. You know, because part-time, I go to someone, like, well, hey, I got a job at the mine, or I got a job up here, I can work my days off. Okay, well, that goes, things are gonna change, and then I have number two guy to come in for those spot meetings. It can be done with the right people, um, right scheduling, um, then like, you know, the, we've talked about the phone deal before. Right now, you know, we use, fair board member takes the phone for a week or two and then we switch off and go with that, so then we don't have a, worry about, well, employees got the phone at midnight, or, you know, nothing like that, um, which I think it should be kinda dealt like that, you know? Fair board member, if there is an emergency, they should be warned under their force.
And this is just my opinion. But the attractiveness of getting somebody that will be a manager is a full-time. The attractiveness of that. Um, and there's some continuation of that, there's... But the attractiveness of getting somebody that will be a manager is a full-time. The attractiveness of that. Um, and there's some continuation of that, there's some stability of that, um, to go through a continual changeover, you're not getting much consistency. And that might be, I mean, I understand, but if, what we're trying to tell you is that the salary for the manager would be separated out, there'd be other things for you to worry about. And that wouldn't be a bone of contention, I don't, we don't have enough money for the benefits, we don't have money because we didn't figure that out. That would be left over here, and then you could deal with the others. Part-time, whatever, but I'm just, that's my opinion.
One thing I wanna point out, um, we had our auditor on the phone earlier, and he wanted to commend you for everything you guys have done to get back on track, and he really sang your praises a lot, Ranchy, so thank you for that. But, secondarily, um, he made light of a situation, and you guys may fall into this. If you end up hiring anybody related to you for any of that part-time work and/or associated things, you need to probably fill out a form of, of some sort of conflict of interest as, if they're a member of one of the board members, or relative of one of the board members, or, also, along with that, is if you are doing anything out there that might put money in your own pocket in any form of any event, you also probably should do the same and move that. I'm not saying that it happens, but if it does, could potentially happen, I think it would protect, could protect you guys so that in case somebody shows up someday and says that there's been some underhanded things going out there and somebody's benefiting, potentially, you have declared it already and try to refrain from it if possible.
There's...
The second part, there's, there's two of us, board members who do put on events kind of regularly out there. We've always kinda documented, you know, always had documentation on what we pay, why we pay it, what we've used, and all that stuff. And, um, four or five months ago, the auditor kinda brought that to our attention, um, and so we've been, we've been doc, like, making sure all of our eyes are dotted, keys are crossed on the documentation on that, where, yeah, it doesn't, there's no, right now, there's no way you can look at our paperwork and what's going on out there to suggest there's any, any underhanding going on.
Yeah, I'm not.
And, yeah, I...
Assuming there is, I just, just for your benefit, just keep track of it, abstain, if it's something, whoever's involved with it, abstain from voting on, in that, during that, during your board meeting. that, during your board meetings, definitely not.
One thing to bring up too, and I'm not trying to discourage you on the part-time position consideration either, but any areas that you usually benefit, you usually have to pay for in another area. So if you're considering maybe a couple of part-time positions, just anticipate the added responsibilities and duties of the board probably. That's just kind of the nature of that. The savings of, of some things usually lands on the constant, which is the, the fair board. So it could be more.
Just speak to that. I mean, right now, the board, board members, we're doing everything there can. He's doing, keeping up on the bills and cleaning the event center. But, you know, so like the two part-time thing, it looks pretty appetizing. Well, if they're here for fifty-two man-hours a week, I mean, that's, you know, fifty-two hours, we don't gotta be there. We can come oversight. It looks good. But that's kind of where we are now. But with the financial thing, said the downside is consistency of, you know, the chances of part-time kind of being a holiday and all that kind of deal. And with, um, yeah, that's pretty much the downside of it is the consistency.
And just to put the, just to recognize the elephant in the room, which is not the one. But nonetheless, we are gonna have a problem with, as you know, the property taxes, the issue that's coming down. There's gonna, we're gonna find some things that are not gonna be quite as. So just in understanding, we're gonna try to, we, I think this board has said we'll take the one burden off, but there will be another burden that you will face.
Yeah. And that's...
I don't even know what that is. Did you tell me?
With all the, um...
What was your maybe?
The, with all the, you know, everything coming down for the state, the taxes and stuff. Understand, I mean, last year, you know, this year's tight, next year's gonna be tighter. We're seeing that. And that's also another reason we were looking into the part-time, save a little money. We're trying to save everywhere we can. And we, in the last year, you know, we really kept, we bumped up the high majority of our rates on things. We basically got a kickback on it, but I mean, I think we handled it fairly well. People are, a year, year passing, people are getting used to it and there's really no complaints about it. We really try to, well, utilize the usage form when you can, not to give out free handouts, but to activate the community. I mean, it's, it's, everything's working pretty dang well.
You, negative feedback. Your public need negative feedback is way better than kickback.
So, but there is some, some time sensitive issue too with, with deciding on this and payment of these employees. So you need to get that straightened out sooner than later. It's coming in a new budget. So.
Again, I would, I really would advise you to go talk to Mallow. They're under the same interesting things you are. They have to raise prices for the Mallow, they have to, for their motel rooms. They have to raise prices for their, for their, the lodge. You know, they go through those interests, those things all the time with different, different but similar interests, you know? Maybe different group of people, but maybe the same group of people. Just be interesting.
Another thing to consider too is, is our area has always been super awesome about sponsorship. So if you've got, you know, you guys are in a perfect position to encourage sponsorship, rather than you taking on a sponsorship yourselves and saying, hey, you know, we're gonna let you have the arena for free. There's a business out there that wants to put their banner up and, and be publicized for the sponsor of that event. There's businesses out there and anytime, anytime someone asks, sometime, it's the humility side of it mostly. You have to go up and say, hey, can we have some money? Would you like to sponsor? Whatever. Once you, once you suck that up, there's a lot of businesses that, that want that opportunity. So encourage sponsorship for those opportunities, you know, when, when the situation arises.
What do you need from me? I'm prepared for my son.
What's four? How many people you think?
No idea. Fifty?
What? On the usage form?
Usage form.
I know, but then does he, where does he need to sign?
When you say liaison.
I bet you can name by that.
Person that you, we get in contact with.
So this is all for the user, these three and the phone number? Okay. So this is the, use the event center for the public hearing? As far as cleaning up afterwards, I don't know. Depends on how muddy it is.
Well, yeah, depends on how muddy it is.
Is that the line on the thirty-first?
Yeah, we have.
Correct.
Okay.
And maybe five minutes cleanup, it may be a three-hour cleanup.
Yeah, maybe it is. We have to mop up the little you, none of that machine.
Anybody got anything else for these fellow folks or?
Well, two, all guys.
We give this.
Personnel. I'm, I'm sorry.
Spell check's the word you want to spell, not what you mean.
Well, I don't, I don't use spell check. I just think I know how to spell.
Well, I didn't want to get emotional with you, but it's personnel.
You ran over a lot of things.
Yeah, we did.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Do whatever you're trying.
What is the difference? Just run over there?
Exactly. There's two N's and an E.
Okay.
Thanks, people. Brandon.
Oh, E L L.
Good one.
So the main thing I had today is when we did that bid for the windows over at the library, they left a window off. So I'm asking for another one thousand, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents to get that front window at the entrance way replaced where the plugs are all in. You like plugs?
Delicious. Is that one going into the?
It's one right at the entrance way on the left there. You can look down and see the plugs.
Stick Bin Ford projects.
And then I've got, I've had Bucky up to look at the dig out. He's given me a price. I'm still waiting on Mason to have free time to come and give me a price on digging out that west wall and resealing it. And then I've got a price on the windows at the jail. Then again, I'm waiting on White's to give me a price on what he would charge to tin out all those wood sections that are around the windows that are rotted out and allowing the water to get back into the building as well. See what would cost to tin those up while the windows are being replaced. Future thoughts.
No, I was just looking at the one, the one percent. And I'm still, it's having to be touched. Now I've got a quarter mile and a half. So I'm wondering, can, hey, Marty?
Yes.
One percent capital project hasn't been touched.
It'd be fit. That fits.
So if we, if this were to pull that, what was it?
One thousand, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
To fix that window out of that capital project fund account, I would entertain a motion.
Still move.
Second.
Second.
Got a proper motion seconded.
I'll forfeit.
Okay. To pull that, those funds out of capital repair line item, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Have a good day.
Is that it, Brandon?
No, you don't have to bug out.
Going out the bugs. Thank you, Brandon. You too. Morning, Ted.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Fine, thank you.
Resets for lunch. New business, old business, three-five-year survey.
So I emailed this to you guys. I just took what you had given me and just broke it out. Kim did give us another one, so that's not on here, the fair grounds. So I don't know now what you guys want it to be.
Yeah, I think it's still a matter. We all know it's a tremendous amount of those tribal funds left, but we have some. I think as we proceed through the year, maybe we could...
Well, at least we have one.
Yeah. Pick another project or two to try to, if there's something on there that we really want to try and mitigate. It's gonna be on there really clear.
A lot of it. All that huge six-dollar sign at the end. Evening, cooling one might be a big one for the library. Said it was fixed on the May twenty-twenty-four, but then Saturday, January eighteenth, kind of from five, a meeting at the library meeting room, ten fifteen, get above fifty-five. So there's obviously something still.
Did that have the radiator fridge?
Yeah.
I think that was the radiator fridge.
Oh, that one was, yeah.
Which is, they want three thousand dollars for glycol to put in the system.
Is that happening? Is he going?
I would think, you'd think that it wouldn't happen with the new.
Is it just water in there right now?
Yeah.
The reason you tend not to put glycol in boiler system, you lose efficiency. You don't get that. The heat transfer.
Right. It's a refrigerator glycol, it is.
Still, it would transfer heat as good as water does.
Did you get?
I don't know if it's, but I must have forgotten on that.
Yeah.
Our house, all been for it. We have no, no, and a freezer in Florida, each in a house or my big boiler.
I started a long time ago.
Yeah, we've got it.
We just asked them to give us.
It's kind of neat because the boiler for some reason was dumped.
We start with a list way back on the COVID times.
BTU or here.
And got everybody to put some down. So I think this is just a continuous. And something that fits.
It'd be nice to go for granted.
Heat source, I mean, secondary heat source. Anyway, then, and we also have.
And we went through the whole list, kind of surprising.
We can electric. Because of our air.
Oh, wait a minute, you gave me my. Just hush down there. We're trying to think.
I appreciate everybody putting this together.
I have a copy of that too, so we can maybe look at, get our priorities, where we kind of want to lead.
Be a great time of budget time to see where we're.
All right, performance evaluations. We've got three of them here. Suzie went off the reservation and is sent, I don't know if everybody saw it, but she was kind of wanting to choose one that her liking, which I guess we can look at. Which one of them is the one that they like the most?
So those are the ones that you guys have in front of you. The third one, the one on top is the one that you like the most.
I think.
Which, did you take?
I think they were, they're six, three, two.
Do they like six the best?
I think that's what she was saying.
See how it's kind of going? Easy. Three.
I'm looking at that one right now and it looks pretty.
I mean, it's just because it would be like a five-minute thing.
Okay, so sample two was the number one pick.
Oh.
Sample three was number two and sample six was third pick.
So two was the number one?
Not one. Two was one.
That's two, right?
Three was two and six was three.
So I'm gonna write a two up here.
Guess what they want to do is write. Which one are you looking at?
Prazo three.
Oh, you switched on me again.
Prazo three is the second most liked on that name. Does it give a place to write com, any comments in it?
It does on the one, the number, six does. Six does.
Yeah, it does.
Sample two had three number ones and two number twos. Three had two number ones and three number twos. And six had two number threes.
Only problem with just having a five through one is unless you write something down as to, I understand you don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but unless it's written down and whoever circled number one instead of five, they leave and you don't have any.
Some comments, you know?
Okay, provide examples.
You can provide some examples down here. The only one is the first part right here. Rest of them all have one line for just a simple comment.
Yeah, I think it should have something where you at least gotta say something like it.
Yeah, just like it does, provide examples.
Reasoning.
So if we go by that, then we kick out, we kick out number three.
It does have.
Right? We kick out number three, which one doesn't have much comment room?
Is that number three?
Yeah, this is number three.
Number three.
Right at the bottom, does have a comment.
You have a place, boxes.
Rating number three or example appraisal number three.
That's number three, which was rating number two.
Oh, for the little pizza. I'm gonna start eating symbols. This one I'm, I'm all for. Yeah, do you have a comment right on the bottom?
Yep.
But not within, do you see what I'm saying? But not within, do you see what I'm saying? See the comments right here?
Yeah, I don't like this.
I don't like this one.
It's two.
This one's.
Two. That's, is that six?
I, you know, I'm done with the numbers.
Let me see.
It's letter B. Pretty sure she has three.
Well, why not, it's this one right here.
That's number three. Yeah, I don't like them.
I don't like them at all. Can we have a consensus that we don't like three?
I like one.
Your notes bitch with you.
He just made the B word.
No.
What? I love this place, especially for lunch.
Bird?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'm all.
What's up?
I'm all for the last one. The one that has.
One being number.
Appraisal six?
All right.
There's my reasons why.
Karen has that one.
Cause you can jot that stuff down quickly. Mr. Chairman, I think what my, my issue with this one is.
Number three?
This is in the first one, so number two.
Number two, okay.
Is it's. Okay, in my first impression, it was daunting and people won't. Our whole purpose of this is that we have people filling them out. I think you look at this and think, I have a half an hour, forty-five minutes, this might take me an hour. I want honest answers, don't get me wrong, but I think this one I did put to the side. That's my humble pin, humble being keyword.
I agree with Marty, that the number six, the reason I like it is because it's very, it's very clear on the expectations. And so a lot of times, uh, and you know, each one is boxed, boxes are easier to read and the expectations are, are clear. And a lot of times a supervisor will have, they'll, they'll do one and then they'll have the employee do one. And this would be very easy for an employee to go in and, and measure what's expected and make their comments. Easier to read, like you said. Usability.
Fair enough. I don't hate six or three.
Yeah, six. Everything's full of things.
Three, when you say three, again.
Comment?
The box one, the one comment one.
Yeah.
That's, I don't have, I don't have stomach issues with that one as much. This one hurts my head.
Yeah. Haven't perused that one yet, it should have. Can I see the number sample two?
For granted.
Yeah.
That one's a little bit. That one they like the most.
Interestingly enough, yeah.
Oh, it's pretty close, pretty close, though.
So with the one Suzie's chosen or where it feels best fits her team.
It says everything about treasures. Maybe suspicious.
Hers is very similar to sample three, I would say. It says scoring system of zero through five with basically one large comment thing at the very bottom. Zero meaning I have no idea what this is to five means I can train others to do this. This must appear to me to be more of like a supplemental, it's not like an employee evaluation. It's more like, how do I perform my job tasks, like purchase redemption, purchase like, how do I post payments while on a tax sale?
So no, it's, it's pretty well aligned with treasures.
Yeah.
Now, and now it'd be okay for her to have a supplemental one, probably if she wanted, but. The, the number system, I, I had experience with the number system where a supervisor had been doing the one through five number system and then that supervisor left. And then the new supervisor came in, it was really hard to measure because they just really weighed heavily on just using the numbers and not a lot of comments. So.
Yeah.
It left it open, um, where we couldn't really tell what that makes any sense.
You know, like, don't, we can miss example six, integrity or professionalism or, you know, I, I think Suzie's covers job knowledge and probably, and it, you know, her working products. But initiative slash, you work as a team, you're adaptable and open to change. She, it's missing all that stuff, so maybe it could be a supplemental thing and.
Well, come on, efficiency versus.
Yeah.
Efficiency.
Yeah.
Did you see how I ran those?
Last bit. So, what do we want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I'll step out there in the line, I'll step out there.
Do it.
Okay, are we gonna deal with the numbers, that's what we're.
Appraisal number.
Appraisal number. Mr. Chairman, I move that the county adopt sample performance appraisal number six as their evaluation.
Fair enough, do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Are we getting any further discussion on appraisal number six as the adopted copy by Weston Kelly? All those in favor of appraisal number six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay. Well, I gotta go visit with Suzie this afternoon about some stuff, so I'll. Pass on the thought.
Mr. Chairman, would this be a good time for us to set up when we will do our?
It'd be a great time, we need to do Mr. Turner and Jimmy. However, I don't know. Schedules, but we could try to figure out something that after a meeting.
That's what I would say, it's probably after a meeting or, you know, a block in there, if something else, but. That way they know that it's commissioners meeting. Jimmy knows.
Well, are we going to workshop at first and discuss it and put up them all our answers before we meet with them?
This is really inefficient right there.
So we need to do it in two steps.
I know. Um, I'll take, you know, you go ahead and explain that, that'd be cool.
Well, we just have to go over it together and put down our answers before we discuss it with them.
So maybe after the next meeting, we could do a little, a short workshop and, and amongst ourselves and.
From the next meeting, we could maybe meet with them.
If we, after the next meeting, we actually do our evaluation, then we can compile it and then at the next meeting, we can have a sit down with them.
Correct.
That way we're not getting five evaluations, we all do our own evaluation, we compile them into one. And then that is the overall evaluation board. And that's a thought.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I, my only concern, I guess, I don't know if this is a problem or not, but, um, when we do it in like a workshop setting in front of that employee, is there any issue with employee, um, employer kind of?
Should that be executive session?
Problems?
We do our evaluations, compile it, and then the chairman sits down, or one person sits down with him and passes that evaluation on.
Good morning.
That's how we did it with, um, we had an evaluation done on the, on the Mallow board. For the Mallow employee and it was, and we had just two commissioners have a conversation with them.
And that way you're not in a, you don't have a quorum group, you know?
We did.
That way.
Asked for him to sign it.
I would be willing to do it, Garrett would definitely be interested in that.
That would be likely the best thing to do.
Two of us, maybe just me and.
Yeah.
Yeah, either way. Reverend Garrett, I don't care, I don't need to do it there.
Yeah, if somebody wants, you know, two, two, two board members sit down with them and that way you don't have quorum, but yet you've got the feeling and the input of all five board members.
So with the next meeting, maybe we do our, okay, so if we could kind of plan it.
Do the, do you want a workshop or do it during the meeting?
Just during the meeting.
During the meeting? Is that, is that kosher that we talk about employees publicly? Do the, do you want a workshop or do it during the meeting?
Just during the meeting.
During the meeting? Is that, is that kosher that we talk about employees publicly?
I'm going to the executive session, I'm sure.
Okay.
Maybe thirty minutes, just in case. We've got two employees.
Two.
Probably at least thirty minutes. All right, maybe we'll get those done before turning the century. Anything else on performance evaluation? Public records, fee schedule. Becky, um, told me that she's, I guess, not a hundred percent comfortable coming up with that number on her own and would like board to.
When I started delving into this, there's so many different ones on these county ones. That it varies so much, I don't want to be the one to decide this. So that's why I sent it to all of you and in, let me see that first one. So it has to be in that resolution that we do. So there just has to be a part added into it. Um, whereas Wyoming State statute sixteen four two oh two provides the authority for the public records and right of inspection by any person at a reasonable time and Wyoming State statute sixteen four two oh four allows for persons with the right to inspect and copy any public records to be furnished copies, printouts or photographs for a reasonable fee, except by the official custodian. So we'll have to add that back in once these guys figure out what the. So some of them start off like the first fifteen minutes is free. And then after that is when the fee kicks in, but all the copies, you know, there's like fifty cents per copy or a dollar per copy. Colors are a certain amount, but the county prices. The county prices range so much. Some of them are fifty dollars an hour and it's like. With them being so different.
Clerical fifteen thirty for info tech, fifty for professional. That's shared in counties. So here's an interesting one, the UNA does fifteen dollars per hour after one hour. Hot Springs. Doesn't say anything about hourly rating. Just prints.
We, we don't do any math, correct? We don't have a, Gilbert has one in his office and we're eventually gonna try to get it hooked up, up here so we can do that, but as of right now, we can't make coffee.
What is, um, top office, what coffee contract, what does it cost us for coffee?
Um, I'd have to look into.
It's twenty cents.
Twenty cents.
And then the colors are more.
Yeah, the, the coffee.
And then shortly you're out the paper and all that.
Was the wording on that statute reasonable fee, is that the word that we use?
Uh, I don't have it now, it's.
Wait, which one?
A reasonable fee.
Reasonable fee.
Here's thirty dollars an hour after fifteen minutes.
That's pretty subjective, reasonable is subjective.
That doesn't seem right.
Well, it's written by the legislator.
See, they've got on this, these resolutions, they've got different wording for the same state statute.
Well, I think because they, they just tried to put it into layman's terms.
One of them says just establish a fee schedule, one says a reasonable fee schedule.
Listen to you say.
I think if you're gonna, if you're going to quote a state statute, you better quote it word for word.
I would, well, on the reasonable side of it. Assuming the word reasonable is put in there so you're not discouraging of the statute. So we don't want to be unreasonable. But we should be, we should be taking care of the resources. That are being used to provide what that statute supports.
Okay, everything's, I think there's four that show that, yes, ma'am.
Well, I think, so at one time, one time what was happening is there were requests that were out of this world. They were asking, there was, um, it was landmen, landmen and just weird requests that would take hours upon hours of somebody's time, remember that?
Yeah, research time.
It was just incredible things that they were asking and demanding by a certain, a certain time. And it wasn't, so I think the word reasonable was trying to stick within, if you are, have a reasonable request, there will be a reasonable charge. If it's going to be overboard, your reasonable will be maybe a deterrent because some of them were just, you know, there's data collecting.
Coffee beer, all four of them there.
I kind of like that, you know, after like fifteen minutes, then you'll go to, your first fifteen minutes or half hours free, you know, kind of thing.
If it's something you just go to the back room and get.
Yeah, big deal.
This is different than my research done at the mall. I mean, that, they come in and do themselves.
Well, this is why they didn't print it.
The whole bank.
So if you, if you want to read it. Here you go.
I'm good.
Are you sure?
I'll take one.
Sounds like a northeastern Wyoming issue.
Must have got a viper somewhere.
I think, some, somewhere with fringes. I haven't looked at, like, Tom.
Usually you want to get one that big, somebody who's taken a major feed, probably.
Want to read it?
I have.
The whole book, cover the cover?
A lot of it.
Really? Which one, title sixteen? You went to eleven? I'm at sixteen.
I didn't delve into sixteen, I delved into that specific statute, but not all of sixteen. Eighteen however, I read entirely. No, ask me how much I read.
What are we talking about?
Retention, however it is.
He's got a good memory, it's just short.
Seems a longer uninterrupted car.
Yeah, I got another battery.
I like the one in counties too. I like sharing counties too, though.
I like, that's my second choice.
Same to one too though.
The cars for yours looks like without that yellow banner. We already have that.
But I need to, yeah, well, it's gonna cost me that, I don't want to do it, you know? So you can put a max. I know. You explained that. But that's another part.
Problem is, is this one only goes to copies.
I got the cell phone video too.
Two days?
Oh, it's actually very long.
I like, I like the...
But it's very prescriptive.
It's...
I like that way.
It's not.
Is there a box I can check?
So I don't, I guess if I'm to move forward a little bit, I... I'm kind of like, yeah, you know, if it's something that you can do in a short time window and it's not a, kind of cause an hour plus worth of your work or one of the employee's work to time to gather whatever information it is. And yeah, I think, like you said, just give it to them, I mean, it... But if it's something that's four hours, then you're probably cutting in the valuable time of, of that office.
This, this may be digital stuff.
I like, I like... I like, I mean, I like Newentis. And the reason is, there's no question. There's no...
No gray area.
This is the way it is.
It's very, it's very, um, it's not too complicated, I guess. Someone gives so much information, it becomes complicated.
The only one like on Newentis is fifteen dollars an hour after one hour. You know, if you got an employee that's, you know, raised, maybe cut the one hour down to fifteen minutes and then just raise the hourly rate.
Well, these are, these are from twenty...
Twenty-one. Newentis is...
Twenty, no, it's from twenty nineteen.
Yeah, nineteen, that would be, yeah, nineteen.
So pretty, a lot higher.
You could set it at a base rate at least and give them a half hour.
This is very, it's very, um, easy to read, it's very straightforward. It doesn't go into a lot of mapping, which we don't do.
Just one page, there's not a lot of detail in it, but it, well, the signature page.
What is this one?
That's for Sheridan.
Yes, it is.
Whoops. Sheridan's is like...
Sheridan's is really, it is really long. This reading is high note wording. Well, let's work on it, Newentis. Let's move, let... Let's change fifteen dollars per hour. What's the minimum rate around here for eighteen something?
Say twenty, put it in.
Okay, twenty it is. Put that.
First, first fifteen minutes free.
Yes, put that somewhere.
Instead of the first hour.
Twenty dollars an hour after fifteen, after the first, after fifteen?
After fifteen minutes. I don't mind the coffee, the color, I don't...
The coffee's seeing a little high, but would you...
What do they have?
A dollar for black and white. Per side and color two dollars per side.
So we just do fifty?
So we can change that.
So you fifty, fifty percent, fifty cents per side per page? So if the double, the double side is a dollar.
In, for the land records, it's fifty cents.
Okay. So what about color? Do you, do you ever let people...
We don't do different for color.
Do you want to mark it off and say there's no color? Or what do you...
We can just do no color.
Well, color costs them. I mean, there's a charge to...
No, we can just, if we do color records, we won't do color.
Let's just mark it off.
Why do I need color? Cross the color off.
And fifty cents per side per page.
Yeah, because if we do front and back, we charge a dollar.
And they have a dollar per, per scanned page? Do you scan for people?
But if you did.
Do you scan for and email documents to people?
So if we by chance do email, it's a twenty-five dollar flat fee for electronics. That's a state statute.
But if you had fifty documents?
It's twenty-five dollars for the flat fee and then it's fifty cents a page. So we have to scan all that in, because we have to copy it off to scan it.
So are we gonna, do you want to put that or do you want to stick with the dollar a page?
Well, might as well say that it's that flat fee that's there.
Okay. So scan our twenty-five bucks flat fee, right? Flat fee, so if you got one page, see, that problem I have is you bought one page and you scanned it, it's twenty-five bucks. I struggle with that.
Reasonable fee?
Yeah, there's a reasonable thing.
Where is it having statues?
I'd have to look, it's there.
I think that's a, an...
I'd have to go find that. That's what we have.
And they've been doing that for...
They had a fee, they had a fee schedule upgrade, but I think it's a, um...
I don't know when we upgraded our fee schedule.
Deal had one.
It's in the state statute book.
And that was twenty nineteen when this, when we did that deal.
It's been upgraded since then.
Give me the statute number. There, solve that. I just, I'm uncomfortable with one page being scanned for twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars, I think, too. That doesn't seem reasonable.
No.
I guess if they were doing it for me, if I was the public, I wouldn't feel that it was reasonable.
I'm probably... Probably draw it down here for that. Well, what about the other? See, on the, on the electronic record? Our policy is always bring, bring in your own, your own... Well, no, you have to bring in unopened.
Yeah, a new one.
You have to bring in new, unopened. So I think if this one, if you buy one from us, it'd be ten bucks. Although that's very high for a small...
Try eighteen three four oh two.
Eighteen three four oh two. Thank you, Jason.
You're doing the same thing I'm doing. You must be quicker.
I didn't do it, I have anything to do with it, Jason said it. You can just tell this.
I waited till you left and then you...
You looked it up?
I did.
Get on Google.
I thought she knew it off the top of her head.
She does.
Oh, sorry. We're clunking chairs, taking up your space. This is quite lengthy.
Well, those are ones in our office, I don't know if the, the ones to look at. Yeah, I don't think that's, that's a whole different.
And your magical word is in there, reasonable.
It's a whole different statute for public records.
Tend to be more related to mortgages and...
It is.
Well, that's the purse office fee, not the public records fee.
So there's no scanning in here. These are lien searches, um, statements and amendment. Another lien search, lien filed. Filing charge for each corner record, certificate liens, plats. Additional reporting charge for any instrument. Anish's state tax lien, state lien certificate, repeat, oh, there's a repeal. Wow. Um, marriage license, marriage certified, military discharge, bond or oath, acknowledgement is abstract. So there's no scanning fee in here.
So if we just set our own little reasonable fee, which in a sense we would, is, I mean, if, if somebody comes in and wants a scan of one page, then what do you got to do? You got to make a printout, right?
You wouldn't need, turn it out, you wouldn't need to scan it.
If they want to scan.
If you want to email.
We can just save it as a PDF too. Since we don't, we don't have to print it out.
That's true.
True.
I'd say dollar a page, depending on where it's at.
I mean, if I have to take something that's already copied off, I have, depending on where it's at.
On average, we're dollar covered. I mean, you know, if something's gonna be a little bit more difficult, some less.
If you had to make copies of pages first, then that's fifty cents and then fifty cents to scan them. That seems pretty reasonable.
Alright, I marked it out, like, you know, it's a little premature marking it out, but then, ready to go back.
I'll be able to read that.
Michael Stolkin did things right in, in what Nathan Todd did in that meeting, dressing him down. He said not to pick sides. No, he did pick sides. And he picked Becky Hadlock's side. And once again, Becky Hadlock was wrong. So thank you on behalf of the people of Weston County, to Michael Stolkin for stepping up and doing the job that the people elect him to do.
Well, and not only was she wrong, but once we finally got our records request, she was even more wrong because it was incomplete and the state public records ombudsman admitted that and said that those documents should have been included. So I just find it interesting that everybody puts faith in someone who continues to make the same mistakes, which at this point aren't mistakes.
Alright, I marked it out, like, you know, it's a little premature marking it out, but then, ready to go back.
I'll be able to read that.
You do much faxing?
What, was this already to you?
Because they have, you know, two dollars per page for faxing.
Well, if it's long distance, it...
Well, that's, this comes through a records request, so if a bank, you gotta send something to a bank, that's not through a records request. That's just, you take their titles, right?
And I, under a different fee. That goes under that fee.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm okay with the fax too.
In case somebody...
I mean, how often are you gonna fax fax stuff to someone these days?
You'd, you'd be surprised, you'd be surprised. I send a lot of faxes, not personally, but I...
I do.
Yeah, a lot of faxes.
Seriously? We receive a lot.
We would, like, like...
Now, it's because the two ladies have printed off.
It's not very secure.
I have attorney's offices that won't accept it any other way.
Really?
Really.
So they're just willy-nilly thinking and hoping they'll go the right place?
Well, I can't speak for attorneys, but, yeah.
And you don't want to.
It's saving them the hassle of printing it all themselves. Oh, it's on the printer, right here. Thirty seconds and five minutes, click and print.
We would fax if they were looking for that, but we do have to do that.
So on this electronic record production, do you have CDs, not CDs, well, flash drives to sell? Okay, so somewhere in here we have to put...
Is ten dollars enough for that?
Is ten dollars, okay? Okay, well, we have to put in here that purchased from clerk. Because that way we know that they don't have, you can't bring one in and have some malware or something on there.
Where it says per medium, cross that, used, purchased from clerk.
Right, purchased from clerk, yes. What, what size are yours? So they know.
Sixteen, probably, at ten dollars.
Yeah.
If you get bigger than that, they're more expensive than ten dollars.
I think about a thirty-two, that was about eleven ninety-five.
Yeah.
But thirty-two versus sixty-four is only like a buck.
I know. Well, it's kind of like that, but like sixteen is right around the ten dollar mark.
Oh, God, it says per, per, they're only sixteen gig, and takes two of them.
So I mean, but you'd need to know that it takes, you don't want to be, you need to be aware that it's a sixteen.
It, it would take a lot to go over sixteen gig.
More than sixteen, but she might have eight, you know? If it was photographs, it might ease it up.
Oh, yeah, that's different.
Four gig a byte.
See, they're fours.
Fours?
Four gigabyte.
Four is still a lot of memory.
Yeah.
It really is.
Ten bucks is high for four. I don't care. Ten bucks for four gigs. Uh, focus.
Some of these have, uh, different, for like technology staff and professional staff. Would there be any time that, that your staff would have to look something up for public records?
Very rarely in my office.
That would probably fall under your category anyway.
That's what I'm thinking, so what...
So that's like the bigger companies that have IT in-house, I think.
And we don't, we don't have to worry about that.
There's ones like this.
It is Sheridan County. Okay. Okay. And, and not have anything about maps, because we don't do maps, but we could fix that later if we had to.
So why let you guys do that?
Okay, thanks. We'll turn to Weston County. Although we can go with Newentis, we want to just keep ourselves safe.
Is this gonna be a uniform for all departments? Is that what you guys are thinking? I didn't know.
That brings you some issues with flash drives and sizes for videos and photos and for when people request our, our stuff.
Do you have your own set fee schedule?
Uh, we do for pages, I'd have to see what we're doing for...
Could we put something in there, an asterisk, that says that the sheriff's department has a separate fee schedule?
Sure we could.
And you come up with one and we attach it to this?
We'll come up, yeah, because we need to get our own different size, each own piece.
Different, a different...
Flash drive.
Flash drives and stuff.
Can we just make sure if you understand that?
Well, we could put it on ours too, unless the copy changes are different. And I can't see the scanning or... But we could certainly put on this one, if you had a different gigabyte flash drive. So we could go eight, twelve, sixteen, whatever. Now, videos, he's right. What do you think? Where did he go? Well, let's try to ask a question of this. What do you think, Jason? Have you had one of your police videos? One of your...
I mean, they're...
They're huge, aren't they? They're ten minutes or so?
I mean, some go for hours.
Well, you'd have to get more than one, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I mean...
Do you have any idea what that one, I mean, if you were getting a, somebody was asking, you know, if they arrested somebody or something? Do you have any idea about that?
I think the ones we pass back and forth are what, sixty-four?
Yeah, but they vary so much on which case, it's just hard to tell.
And they're like forty-five.
Sixty-four's aren't that bad.
Oh, they're not?
No.
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 I think...
One-twenty-eights are expensive.
One-twenty-eight, they take a jump between sixty-four and one-twenty-eight, but thirty-two and sixty-four are like a dollar difference. There's really not a lot of, it's kind of funny, I usually tough people into the bigger ones.
Well, do we need to wait until we get theirs and try to add to this?
Well, we can wait. I had sent it to all the department heads and I'm not always sure that Brian gets my emails. Kind of like everybody else goes to junk and not everybody gets emails.
But there's two different junks on these things. That's what's strange.
There's a junk and then there's...
There's a weird junk.
You guys came up with your own fee schedule, maybe for the... You guys came up with your own fee schedule, maybe for the cost of sending video, like, is it gonna be on large? So what we do is, uh, depending on the media that we put video on, it's listed in there, but we still use discs. Some places require that, but typically, it's a jump drive. And so, the size of jump drive, different cost. You wanna be attached to this, Brian, or should we give you your own? Uh, I'd be more than happy to look at it and see... See if you could say... See where that, if it's, how well it matches up, but we run into, we're constantly given, um, mainly reports, stuff like that, to like insurance companies and stuff like that, and every one of them wants it in a different way. Pictures, video. So maybe you could figure out a way to... We give it, we give it to the county attorney's office all the time, they never pay, but we give it to them all the time, too, so... Well, maybe we could morph it into that somehow. Go ahead.
What's, like, we got this number five, number six, sheriff department fee schedule for public records.
I don't know what, you know, I don't know if you wanna separate them out, I just, I think, if you were to look at this...
Or just separate, per, per device, you know, if it's a bigger device, it's to charge for.
Yeah, so they're like the three gigabyte thing, there's, there's sometimes we're up into the twenty-some with video. Because you could have an hour and video in it, takes how much.
Would you look at this?
Yeah.
And will you, will you, on the copy charge and everything, see if it's similar? Because I don't see why we could...
I think the copies are the same, you know, the paper side of it is, is very similar.
Okay. Because I think we're good with anything, and then just list how much the... You know, and there's something about, but for...
I think ours is two dollars.
Yeah.
What, what's two dollars?
I think ours is two dollars a page.
Two dollars a page.
For copies?
One side or two?
One side.
Color or black and white?
Color.
You have, no, I'm sorry.
So that's color, so we could, we could put color in there, two dollars a page.
See, maybe, maybe you should.
Paper's expensive.
Well, ink's expensive.
Yeah, that's our problem, is ink's expensive, and you can't send what, I mean, you can, but the photographs and all that stuff that we deal with...
Right.
Color's pretty necessary.
Right. And it really eats stuff up.
So we could put color back in there.
Let's put, and...
At two dollars a page.
At two dollars a page. That's unreasonable?
It'll have black and white, a dollar.
A dollar. So you wanna go back to a dollar?
We gained for that.
It's dollar per side. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I have made shift.
There's another copy here somewhere.
Oh, don't be bragging.
I was thinking that you could...
Do you just want a piece of paper?
No, I don't want this paper, because I'm good at it.
She's got it going now.
She's got it going. So the clerk's one is four gig.
Yeah, so we're at ten dollars for a four gig deal.
Okay.
Yeah, I think our most expensive one's eighteen.
What, how many gigs is it?
Sixty, sixty-four.
Sixty-four?
And put twenty dollars for sixty-four.
Twenty dollars for sixty-four gig. So we're between four and sixty-four gigs. Do you wanna do a sixteen and thirty-two? Because that's a, that's a large gap.
Do you have multiple, because I don't?
Sixty-four, yeah.
No, the sixteen and thirty-two.
The sixteen or...
We usually just run across the street and buy...
I gotta, actually, I gotta order some.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, if we don't have the house, we literally just run across the street and get it.
Yeah, and if I don't have that, I'll just go into the newsletter journal.
Yeah, for long you want.
Yeah.
Well, if not, I'll just use more than one of these.
Well, that can be done, too. With videos, it's hard to do that.
Yeah, you can't.
You can't do it on video.
But you can on sixty-four.
I don't have video.
We're talking about the sheriff's...
I have to sit, just...
Do fifteen for a thirty-two.
Fifteen for a thirty-two. Does that work? I just want this done, because what you said, it just, this is teers. Okay, what else are we, are we going on? So, staff fees are twenty dollars per hour after the first fifteen minutes. How about you guys?
We've never charged that, or a fee for that, so I would not be opposed to that.
Okay. And the postage charge is actual charges.
We don't charge anything for walking across the street.
Right, right.
We could.
But if it's something that's, has to be shipped, or a big document, you know, whatever the postage charge is, it's passing.
Passing.
So is there anything else on here that would be appropriate, that you tell us? We've got photocopies, we've got scanned pages, we have fax, we have electronic records, we have staff fees and postage. Is there anything left? Go ahead.
What's the electronic record comment form?
So that's the one we're just talking about.
Sorry.
Is the ten dollars for four gigs, the fifteen dollars for thirty-two gigs.
Okay, so it's just a flat, yeah, nevermind.
And then if you have spent two hours getting all that information put on there, you charge that.
You have a staff fee.
Well, I was just wondering about the, because I was thinking the same with the scan thing, but nevermind.
Well, in...
Just regarding...
That's what we're trying to work out.
You guys have to put stuff on disk sometimes, too, don't you?
Sometimes, a lot of things are more so going to thumb drives and jump drives, because nobody has disk drives anymore.
Do you ever do actual photos? Do you ever have to do actual photos?
We print those out in color.
Okay, because, because there's one here that says photos, actual cost. Other sheet sizes, actual cost, and utilization of outside vendor copying, actual cost.
I, I, you know, I think they would probably go outside and get that cost, but you wouldn't go outside to get anybody, not on cop, on police work.
Probably for, if it's in court-type stuff, for that, probably not necessarily for the public record, unless if it was needed for the same...
Like, if you had a giant copy and...
I mean, there's times that you do, if you had like, post reports that I needed, out of...
That's not a public record.
But that would be a public record. So, so we wouldn't really go out outside of there. I was just thinking, because a lot of times we'll scan or save the electronic file and send it, because you can email some of those files instead of the drive.
So if you were to email, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you were to email them, could you charge the twenty dollars for the first? Or are you just sending them...
Generally, it's like the scan thing, you save it as a PDF and then send that PDF.
That's up to you, if you think that eats your time, I'm, you're...
That doesn't really matter.
Okay, well, I think that goes back to...
No more than the others, yeah.
That goes back to your fifteen minutes.
This, this gives a good basis, we have to go back and adjust it any year, or, you know, if it doesn't fit, we can come back and adjust, at least we'll have something on file, on record, that we can go back to.
I don't, the only, only thing I would ask this put on here, is any other type of electronic record, so if you needed CD or whatever, I would put, ask.
Actual cost.
Actual cost. Just ask, if you have to have it done that way.
Any, any other type of media.
Yeah.
Just something like, any other medium, actual cost.
Right.
Something like that.
Right, that now. I'm okay with that.
You know, shorthand, right?
Yeah.
I don't really get it right in here, it's small. It's because I'm, it's a brain thing. A small break.
You walked away, you walked, I gave it to you, there's no way you would... If you walked away from that, that is your fault. Okay, yeah. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I move. Do you want me to go through this whole thing?
Uh, the prices.
You betcha, I'll be glad to. Mr. Chairman, I moved that, we... It's a nerve.
It's recorded, see?
So we need a resolution, is this correct?
Yeah.
We have to have a resolution for a fee schedule? Or can we just have a fee schedule?
Like the statute says, there has to be a resolution, if I'm not mistaken.
We gotta change the resolution anyways, to... What was the wording that needed changed? There's some wording that she came across.
But it's in the statute.
No one, no one can...
It says, desire, desires to establish a fee schedule for public record requests properly submitted to the Wanta County Court to ensure notices provided by the record requister... It doesn't say anything about resolution. And this fee schedule for Sheridan was amendment A.
There was some sort of wording, not just the fee schedule that needed adjusted. It's like, like you have to circle over it.
I sent mine back to you, just a...
It's only say they, that's almost the exact same wording on this one, desires to establish fee schedule setting forth original cost. That's the same statute, sixteen for two oh four.
Well, we went to have that in there.
Right, but it says nothing about a resolution.
Um, the county measures of the county of Wanta, and the state of Wyoming pursuant to Wyoming State Statute sixteen four two oh four, desire to establish a fee schedule for the public record request, properly submitted, the Wanta County Court, to ensure notice to, is provided by the recorder, record requister, and the public in general to provide informality and application in relation to records produced and informality with the Wyoming Public Records Act.
I was looking at subsection C there.
Right, so does this say resolution?
Yeah, well, it has all kinds of... I was looking for this, and I'm trying to expect...
Authorized by duly enacted or adopted statute, rule, resolution ordinance, executive order, or any other...
You can see, there is a...
What? Are they? I didn't try that.
Or the cost. Adopted statute, resolution, ordinance, executive order, or so we would call the resolution.
Yeah.
Right? So be it. Thank you. So I'll wait for the resolution. I resent my, starting of my motion. I'll wait for the resolution.
So if it makes me agree, give me a review.
Thanks, guys.
You want to do that? Right.
Sure.
That took way longer than I anticipated. Marty, you wanted to add Title twenty-five contract.
Yeah, did you get us a contract?
I thought we could've gotten that.
Is this what she...
Yeah, what did I...
That's the one from the electronic...
Yeah. You haven't gotten that yet?
No. I haven't seen any.
I'll, I'll make sure.
Treasuries, investment, is this what you were looking for, Marty? I haven't seen any.
I'll, I'll make sure.
Treasuries, investment, is this what you were looking for, Marty?
We got that.
We got that.
And then the Mala letter, that was...
Did you send me a Mala letter?
She did.
I didn't get it.
What you asked for, I had to send it, that was copied, that, too.
Well, if you can send it to me again, I got some sources. And if I did it right now, I might get it.
Okay.
If the theaters are ready. Oh, my goodness. Okay, we'll be taking offense to that.
Pretty good there?
At some point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have this discussion with the investment.
I agree, a hundred percent. I'm gonna have to have a short conversation with her this afternoon about when, because some of these are like, different timeframes in the year, and...
Well, the state statute says that we're one of the first things that happen, that you have an investment, she has a discussion with us about the investments. And I just would like to have it so that we, as a county, know where we are, how this fits into the world, what's coming up, um, like...
You know, we could add her to the next agenda, just as a...
Because one thing that's missing on this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
We put away money for the bridge. Do you know where that is?
Not sure where it's, is it in the road fund?
No, we've set it aside.
I know, but did she stuff it into something?
That would be a question to ask her. Where is it? Here's why I ask. When we, when we set forth to put stuff, encumber it, more or less, we're not, we're not under that type of, um, accounting system. So we don't have, I wish we did, I wish we had encumbered funds. But we are a cash basis. When we go to get that money, because we had encumbered it, it's nice for us to know where it is, and it's nice for the next treasurer to know where it is. I don't know where it is.
And not tied into a year-long...
I said, well, and Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll say that, and she'd agree, we went for some gravel, some engineered gravel with county road fund, and, uh, we had an issue with the crusher being moved. So we were delayed, and it got put in the seven-year CD.
Okay. Noted.
I see what happened, she sent it to, Mr. Todd, probably thinking he would distribute it, she didn't send it to you directly, so what email do you want this?
Send me to the, send me to, um, the Bahamas, it's...
So on checks and, uh, new business, next month. Marty, on the outer door. I'm gonna get her in that, for our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, new business.
She also did.
Michael, this is, as soon as you're done with that. This is that, uh, six hundred and thirty-six, six hundred and thirty-six dollar warrant, number seven three five four four, that happened prior, this was the detention one, right? That happened prior to him being in our custody.
Mr. Chair, for me, there, and without looking at that bill again, um, there is a possibility that there is one bill that would be paid for by the county. Without HIPAA, it happened while in custody, so, so there, without looking at it, um, it would be the X-ray fee, um, would, would be at our cost. The rest, whatever you guys are gonna do, that's, I'm fine with that.
So, I think the question was, is, we need to get this warrant in front of Michael to get it in front of the hospital, to try to get an understanding of why we're being billed for...
All right.
Do you have a copy of that?
I got the number, I got the number. You've got it right. Yeah.
And, and some of that, Mr. Chair, that's, you know, when they ask for a resident, some of these don't have a residence, so the address that is given is... of these don't have a residence, so the address that is given is...
Detention.
Detention.
Yeah. Makes sense.
And because of that, for an example, of what he's talking about, the P E O S arrest, somebody takes him over to the medical before they bring him to the jail, then P E ends up with the bill, because that's the only address we had for the individual. That's us too.
We need to delve into that farther, do you think?
He's got some, but yeah.
I think I can talk to...
Yeah.
One of these guys.
I can make you a copy of that.
Yeah, can you just give us a copy?
Good. Let's move on to the Upton meetings. We, this board, like to consider a resolution to hold some Upton meetings this year. We didn't do it beginning of the year, we dropped the ball on that. We typically do minimum of one, we'd like to do more. If there's any discussion, I'd like to hear it. I guess this, Mr. Chairman?
I think it's important we have meetings up there. However, I kind of noticed having them at the end of the quarter was maybe, could be kind of iffy, our last meeting of the quarter. So I guess my suggestion would be, we're maybe like April, maybe at least April and October, or maybe April, July, October, something like that. And then, or November, and that way we aren't at the end of the quarter.
Okay, then. I think it'd be good to do too, for sure, this year. Maybe next year, we, if we wanna do more, if we feel like there's people showing up and interested in attending those, it's kind of a double edged sword. We lose the ability to work down here, but same token, I do see it's nice to incorporate the community down there and what's going on and give them an opportunity to show up. Fortunately, few do, but some do. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
You want to have meetings by resolution, and I have resolutions prepared to have the second meeting in April, and the second meeting in August. Any options?
What's going on in August?
Okay.
So it'll be the nineteenth of August, is Wednesday or...
Or no, September.
Wednesday.
July, August.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to prepare a resolution? Or do we just have the resolution prepared and then make the motion to accept it?
It's written.
Do we need a motion to prepare a resolution, or can we just ask you to prepare the resolution and then have a motion just accept it?
I can just prepare the resolution for your guys' consideration.
Yeah. Yes, sir, most certainly.
Do we even need one? You have to have a resolution to tell when your days are, that you're not...
I guess we might not, because it's the first meeting that you would have to have a resolution to move location, wouldn't you?
I don't know if you necessarily need one, but it's good for the public. It's good for public knowledge, so they can refer to it if they need to.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think it's official then.
So we're saying April and August, so what was that?
Second meeting.
Motion to resolution.
Just do it by motion.
Okay.
And it's in the minutes.
Make the motion, then we move our second meeting in April, which is April fifteenth, to Upton, and also the second meeting in August, which is August nineteenth, to Upton.
Motion property seconded, remove the April second, meeting in April and the second meeting in August. We have the company town council chambers. Discussion.
Benny, it's available with them.
I'll double check, it shouldn't be an issue, I don't think. We do it in the mornings.
Well, we can always go to Remus.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion on the full table, please say aye.
Aye.
Tosed? All right. Detention, please.
Did you just send it? There it is. Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
So, at the last meeting, we discussed potential of trying to make some increases to some individuals in detention and/or potentially bonuses, things like that, which didn't seem to go over real well, right?
Well, this is not, not unless we figure out a way to take care of the people that already been slugging through this.
Yeah. And...
I guess just for clarification on my part, I'm just asking, have the sheet that Becky provided, is so if we eliminate a position and then my fellow pay raises, how much additional cost is that for benefits and such? And I couldn't remember what that number was.
I think I left mine to...
I don't know where it's at. About here.
Mine's in my dash in my pickup.
Which I need to bring up. So not very secret.
So you're, you're talking monies that's encumbered in your salary, sort of line item.
That money, if we eliminate the position, it would, we'd still be good.
Yeah.
It's the benefits that you guys pay outside of my budget was the concern. The increase in benefits.
Is it, is it this one? Well, let's, let's just move on from there.
This one you put together? Oh, wait, okay, I do have that.
So she has it figured out to five thousand one sixty-six eighty increase per month.
That's for everybody?
Next fall. For four employees.
I need some clarification. When you say five thousand per month, is that five thousand times four per month?
So that'd be twenty thousand a month plus times four.
So, so the, just the increase in wages cost that much more?
Sixty-two thousand per year. For the, for the extra, for the benefits.
That sounds better.
For four.
Thank you. For all four. Okay, that sounds much better.
With the increase with the wages. And just the benefits.
Twelve ninety-two a month per employee.
I might have to go find the money somewhere.
You went right past me when you said, if you were to cut...
Good.
Tell me what you're talking about.
So we are, we are budgeted for a total of seven employees in detention. So if I take that budgeted amount, and then make one position and take that money from that position and divvy it between the six, that would give us our increase.
That's what I was asking, in that line item.
Yeah, in my line item.
Yes.
But where the problem comes, obviously, is outside of my budget, it is the benefits that you pay.
So where's our, what line item is that?
It's the seven.
It would be...
Is the detention a seven?
Yeah, it's a seven.
I got inmate, I got tower, maintenance salary.
I think that's more cons...
I got law enforcement pre...
Jailer's salary.
It's a seventy-four thousand. Zero one two two.
Two two.
Two two.
Jailer's salary.
Well, isn't that just as clever as they come? I don't have one. Jailer's salary, one two two.
Yep.
And that actually would be more to this, because we have it only figured with four employees.
Right.
And we don't have the increase with Jason, so it would be more, because if he's wanting to hire two more, or, yeah, it would be more than this. We haven't only calculated with four current.
You have, you're on schedule to pay just perfect.
No, so that'd be about twenty-six thousand more a year, something like that, if I figure it right. So it'd be more like a...
She might have had Jason.
So I have a budget report that ends February. Like a March, April, May, June, June, June. So that's one-third of the, of the year's budget. One-third is thirty-three percent. We got forty-one percent. Ten percent of forty, we only have about forty-five.
Actually, get a new budget report.
Get one on...
This is February twenty...
You get one more, end of March.
I haven't ended March yet.
I think I'm four instead of three.
So Brian, my assumption is, at the end of this year, at the end of the fiscal year, you would have seven percent-ish left over.
Yeah, because overtime is eating us like crazy.
So you wouldn't have anything.
Yeah, I doubt, and we're liable, if we come along the track we're going now with all the overtime we're paying, we're liable to be up here asking for a...
I mean, come April, we will, because I will be down under position.
Yeah. Yeah, April first, there's another.
At eighteen or twenty?
Twenty.
At twenty dollars an hour or eighteen?
Yeah.
So was the budget worked at twenty?
Uh, it was...
Yeah, so it should be worked at the highest rate plus, uh, plus, uh...
It's at the, it's set at, the budget's worked at twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two, plus a dollar an hour for shift differential.
This is, this that Amber did, there's two worked at twenty-one, twenty-two, and two at eighteen ninety-two.
In the budget?
In this.
No, I mean in the budget.
And the budget is twenty-one, twenty-two.
So what I'm just trying to figure out is what money is, is... Sorry. At the end of this year, she's not gonna have enough money.
Right.
And you only have the four employees, or...
Might as well say three.
That has been all the bunch of overtime.
This, this current one, no.
February's no, April, I will have a lot. Because you gotta calculate my salary as that overtime, because I'm working shit.
And a lot of them.
A lot.
And we're putting, pulling deputies off in there to work overtime as well.
I just, I'm sorry. I just, I, I feel really strongly that I feel like it's, it's something we just have to work out. This is some, we're, we're putting them behind the eight ball if we don't, because they're gonna just keep losing people, and they're not gonna look at anybody else. And I don't think Brian wants to try to run the whole department by himself. And if these people can make more money somewhere else, you know, reality is, that's where they're gonna help. You would, I would, that's just why.
Yeah, and that's obviously the issue, right, is right here locally, that same job, basically, that same certification, uh, is considerably paid, paid considerably better, and the requirements are considerably less. So it's too full, you can't change the requirement.
Well, here's your problem. We can't get money. Admin does not have enough.
There's one more place, I know there's kind of enough, and I don't know, it's not, it's not sustainable, like...
Is it a budget, admin is supposed to be a budget account. We don't use it at that way, but we've always stuck in that knowing?
I'm talking about, you could use those ARPA funds to, to dump in there, but...
Are you allowed to with ARPA funds?
Revenue replacement. So, the issue is, that's one and done.
Yeah, you run out.
Yeah.
You can sustain it next year.
What we need to do, come this upcoming budget year, is figure out, are we bloated in certain places, and how we amend that. I mean, if we've, or can we figure out a way to sustain our, because the argument can be made, that these are one of the most important individuals to the county and departments. And my assumption is, is all the overtime hours is causing fatigue, and which could lead to errors, and also... These are one of the most important individuals to the county and departments. And my assumption is, is all the overtime hours is causing fatigue, and which could lead to errors, and also lack of enthusiasm of going to work every other day, or every day, without sustainable break times.
Well, you don't sell it to me, you just have to, you just have to find it.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I'm just selling it back to the map.
Stimulating your search effort, taking that.
Did you see the paper cuts I have over there?
Well, you know, I think, I think even all, anybody on the street, they're essential. I mean, it's not just statute. They're essential to the, to the life we put of our whole county. And we may have to cut in other places, come budget time, to, to make this happen for them. We're gonna have to put our priorities in certain, in place. So those people understand that.
Here's, here's my argument, so I can be the devil's side of the kit, because I used to have, right here, used to have. There isn't a department here that isn't gonna say that their staff is in the system. Not one.
Not one, that's true, but is it by statute?
What's theirs by statute?
Then we have to have law enforcement.
We have to have a sheriff. We have to have a jail and a sheriff.
We have to have a jail.
And I can tell you guys, we're close to not having a jail. If I lose one more employee, we're shipping inmates out at a cost of over a hundred dollars a day.
If they'll take them.
If they'll take them.
So if you have to ship them out, we have to pay wherever they go.
We have to pay their fees, plus our fees to go pick them up, to bring them back and forth to court, because it's not that county's responsibility.
Yeah, so in that scenario, Campbell County already said no, but if we were, let's just use that as an example, we'd have to drive there and get them, bring them here for fifteen, twenty minute court hearing.
And then you're still paying me my salary to sit in an empty jail. So again, I mean...
Campbell County said they wouldn't, weren't interested if we had...
Yeah, that was, that was a couple years ago when we were...
I mean, you guys gotta keep in mind, the other counties are having the same issues we're having. I mean, at the last I knew, Campbell County was now nineteen. So...
And our current population today, right now, is thirteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Well, we had this conversation last year for the budget amendment, I brought you like a five year span, and we're already surpassed last year's inmate population. And you said, what, we got four, four months left? April, May, June, tonight. And you're right, Marty, the, the, every, every department, their, their employees are important.
I couldn't talk to them and say, you know...
I'm not gonna argue that.
But that's where the, the balance comes, that when you say, this one is, you know, more essential.
So can I throw this out there? If we do Brian's thought process on this, to get us through this year, and we backfill with ARPA funds to backfill any of the extra, um... backfill any of the extra, um, expense items on the benefit side of things. Then we're still in the same predicament come June, but we maybe then have the opportunity to adjust. I don't know if we will. I know, I mean, I know, we can't ask you to take a lead and go back to your old salary.
We can't do that. Yeah, you can't do that.
So...
So your idea was to take the two, the one employee from where?
From detention. So we haven't filled that, we haven't been full in detention for three years. So we're like, okay, that's on it. Let's get rid of one of those positions.
Okay.
Take the money from that position, pay the rest of the positions better, and maybe we can recruit them. Get us a little closer to what the camps do. I did not rea, well, it's not that I didn't realize, but I did, I had no idea what that was gonna cost on the benefit side, seeing as how that's not in my budget. I would have no way to measure it.
So Brian, do you have all your, your deputies' help?
Mm-hmm.
Because that would be cool if you didn't.
Well, you better thank the Lord we do. Because those are the guys that are covering the jail. I got two of them working almost full-time jail on top of patrol.
And that's fair. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, no, what I'm saying is, that's, that's why my budget in the salary shows that we're on schedule to barely make budget or go over. That's, that's all that overtime we're paying. And, you know, that's, they're obviously happy to make the extra money, but it's starting to hurt. They're starting to get tired.
Yeah, it'd be cool if you weren't telling them.
Couple of them would like to...
I'm just trying to find money.
Yeah.
Where they paying on the hill, twenty-six?
Twenty-five. Twenty-five something. It's, yeah, it's twenty-six.
So it appears, what you're trying to do is get them in that twenty-four range.
Trying to get a little closer, because I've always found that the environment down here is a little better than up there, so that's something they're willing to swallow to come down here versus...
Well, here's what's gonna happen next year. We won't have some of these balance accounts as big. That's not gonna happen.
No, because those ones weigh...
Down to three.
But they're one, they're total.
Yeah, I did that. And so you remember, that's just benefits.
I just have a balance account.
But that's not benefits plus... I think she's doing benefits plus increase.
It seems like a really large number. I was wondering if it was because of the retirement account visit for them.
I don't think she put up a letter A.
Does it say increase in due?
This, this number is benefits plus man, the man hours. It's fifty-one sixty-six. That's the increase in wages plus benefits. Appears right here, because she's doing new pay plus benefits, or the increase.
Hey, Jason.
Plus, there's the benefits. Off the... That's an increase.
And that public comment.
Pay plus benefits.
None of them are in the agenda right now. My public comment.
So she must not have that.
And the other deal numbers?
She didn't carry the wage back, yeah.
That's what we wanna know, excuse me, so cool.
That's all we want.
What'd you say? That's what we wanna know. That's what we wanted to know. So I'm glad you listened.
It's all right here.
That's what we wanna know.
I don't have nothing for gravel. That's their problem. What's on there, Justin? We don't have nothing. We don't have nothing either, probably.
I don't do gravel. That comes out, that comes out of something else.
Jason, how long are the shifts over there at the county?
I have the road fund.
How many days?
And it's not busy, on my side, it's not busy.
So right now, we're four on, four off.
No, we buy it out of it.
We're, we're gonna be switching to either six on, two off, or four on, two off. But with the four on, two off, you're doing four days, two off, four nights, four days, two off, like three, four. He did the six on, two off. I can do it in one month. A day and one night. But you're working... But you're working that six day.
So we'll only do it for a month.
Well, we did do that for a while.
I wonder everybody's getting tired. I know Garrett was talking about it's tired.
It's scary, because when you start burning out, like you said, you can make mistakes and you can get tired.
We're great right now, Marty.
It starts getting scary, driving as much as you guys drive.
The increase for the detention.
Keep our jail open.
To keep our jail open. Oh. Well, yeah, because public comment is supposed to be two thirty. He's gonna come and talk to you. Well, you guys wanna all want it, and also you're gonna be told.
Seeing to me, it is the one. Here, the whole share.
And we're done with this.
Is that bust be done?
Yeah. Because you just wanted all your... I want the bridge, I just want the bridge money.
Do they have to be done?
The bridge money's got spent, remember? No, the bridge money was five hundred eighty-five. Three hundred fifty thousand?
What a tough nut.
We saved five hundred thousand several years ago.
That's a tough nut, especially with what they're paying up there.
You guys are spending it.
That's too much competition.
It hasn't been surveyed yet. The bridge hasn't been surveyed.
Wow.
I think it's, I lived it.
Yeah, general road break, always highly eighty-five.
What, we saved money for? Yeah, you spent it. Then I had to go to Old Highway eighty-five and then it got spent. Because you guys were messing building bridges. So that's where that's at.
Could get spent on that thunder.
Nope, they shot all on Old Highway eighty-five. What months is that? Do you have it all broken down?
I would have to do a report on that.
We gotta go there.
Three hundred thousand or whatever used to be in there. Eighty-five.
Okay, go to one hundred.
I don't know what. We got, we're on track. We're in order. We have one.
Right, so what do you, what do, what were you thinking?
Okay.
It's a lot, but she said it doesn't sound...
Okay, I'll check that. I'll bring it back.
Four hundred.
Thanks, ma'am.
Times twelve.
Call me when you get the weekly comment. I'll call you anytime.
Times four. Two, three. That's times four.
Do you guys submit this figure?
Benefits only is like an additional, a little less than, between fifteen and twenty thousand. It's not this sixty-two thousand.
So that's where, that's...
Yeah, I mean...
So the additional is what's added on top of their...
If we did what Brian's thinking, we'd have, for this year alone, well, no. For this year alone, we'd have to come up with about a quarter group of that. Right, not so much times left, so five thousand bucks probably to cover benefits. Next year is going to be the issue. How do we pay for it? The increase and the benefits.
We call that, you're also gonna have about twenty grand for upstairs.
What's that?
Just remember, we got about twenty grand going upstairs, too.
Court, yeah.
Maybe.
Why did he ask that? How did he get there for?
No, and I don't know how you're gonna fix the problem and sort of bring him the wages up a little bit. I know it's not the right answer, I mean, the answer that works right with our budget, but...
I guess, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
I understand the problem. I understand. I was looking for, because we've, we've got some big bucks looking at us. I guess what I have to ask is in your budget next, coming up here, my first, that you can stick with no new hires.
Well, then it's pointless to bring the wages up to hire people to help us out, so...
Yeah, well, that's my problem.
Getting rid of the one.
Getting rid of the one, you can refill that one. I...
You mean, Marty, you mean not fill any additional positions, just where you cut the one and stay with one.
Right, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, keep it at six, okay.
Yeah, keep it at six, what I would ask, because I didn't ask for the eight.
Because I, I still need to, yes, I need to fill it.
You're gonna need the six instead of seven.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I was asking. Not necessarily stick with the four.
Yeah, but it's...
You're on your end, Brian. What, do we have a dollar amount that is going to be that you have that you're planning on dispersing into those employees?
Yeah, it's, uh... Yeah.
Didn't take the high-tech down over here in a minute.
It'll go from... It'll go from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-eight, or, or twenty-three, eighty-five.
Boy, I just almost have a heart attack.
Yes, you did.
I don't, I don't need any better.
Maybe you might not be, you're a manager.
I understand that part.
Did you say you wanted to become a dinner? You're making volunteers. We already offered that to you folks.
Yeah, I could do it.
What, what's the dollar amount that we're talking about with that salary?
Uh, it would increase at two dollars and sixty-three cents.
Right, increase, but you're, you're talking about a salary that's not filled right, right now, correct?
Hourly wage.
Oh, an hourly wage? And what is budgeted for that, not salary, but for that position?
Oh, twenty before, no, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
You're talking hourly?
Hourly.
Okay.
Uh, yearly, it's forty-seven. Forty-seven, uh, one hundred ninety-three, one one eight cents.
Okay.
What we'll go to, would go to is fifty-three thousand and forty-two dollars.
Is there a possibility with what we have to work with here that we could cover approximately five thousand? Is that what we're talking about? The five thousand on the...
It's gonna be that and some change probably for the benefits one.
If, is there a possibility that we could we could cover that portion and back pay it, which is not going to put you out of twenty-three, eighty-five, but it would be slightly less than that? Can we, can we figure our, our hourly backwards in accordance to our benefit?
We have to do the numbers, but we're trying to get close to the twenty-six dollar, you know, and I know we're not gonna get there. But maybe then a couple bucks.
And I know that's the target number.
Start sniping some people from up there, but... Because the, I see what you're saying.
Right.
The one, uh...
Yeah, it would, you'd almost bring them right back to where they're at now. Almost.
One of these, they have jumped up to twenty-five. Is that, just, is that an, like a typo? Which...
Oh, uh, that would be because trying to, because you have your corporal position, so...
Which we don't.
We don't have one in there, so that would be accounting that portion of their, about twenty-four, ninety-six.
Be about a dollar more.
Yep.
So if you had your six, you wouldn't have overtime?
Well, yeah, not here what we got now.
So you would save six, seven thousand dollars?
In some cases, more, because some of the overtime is coming out of there and it's getting paid to patrol.
Oh, it's coming from the shares. The law enforcement, you know what I mean?
Because I don't have an overtime budget in the patrol side, there's, there's no room for overtime in the patrol side. Never has been. So if I pay them overtime to work in the jail, it has to come out of that intention. So, you know, salary line.
How close to covering our benefits would we be by saving the overtime?
Right.
I mean, that's the question.
Yeah, I think it would cover her...
It has to just, yeah, retirement a little bit, I would say. I don't know about medical and all that.
And we're looking at... I don't know.
I have another question. So the numbers we're coming up with is if you have a full six. And right now, you have four.
Soon it'll be three, yes.
Soon it'll be three. So by June, realistically, do you think you could fill those positions, or maybe not?
We would hope to, but you're right, that's, that's still up in the air, right?
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
It'll be three. So by June, realistically, do you think you could fill those positions, or maybe not?
We would hope to, but you're right, that's, that's still up in the air, right?
So there is a possibility out there that one of those positions wanted to be filled by you.
Correct. And, you know, in, in that environment, you typically, uh... It depends, it depends on so many things, but it seems like we're always looking for at least one, even when, when it's well-paid or adequately paid. Always typically looking for one.
So if we come up with five thousand dollars for you, you might have some of that left over by, by June.
Well, yes, no, because if I don't get them filled, I'm still paying overtime.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, so I, I was questioning of that, but...
We let you, never mind. We let you go. Please, Marco, we let you go.
No, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, but if I'm, you know, and it typically takes us a month. If, if somebody applied with us today, it might take us up to a month to get them actually on paper.
But you're gonna be paying overtime out during next.
The issue's gonna be next year if they actually manage to jump to six. Because then it'll be...
Yeah, then you're...
Then we're really in for some benefits.
Those are encumbered. Those are encumbered. We're going to make a mistake.
It's a pleasure aboard.
I wanna go home.
Yeah, I know. It's hard to smell.
Yeah.
Good smell.
We have it in the ARPA funds, but that would be the best place to take it.
We could easily cover this year with ARPA funds. We could probably cover several years with the ARPA funds. So, the issue is, um, like I said, it's probably, and maybe I was being selfish here. I always looked at those funds as a one-and-done, so let's fix some of our problems, you know, with the buildings and, and things, but, you know, we're in kind of dire measures right now, and it's gonna be more dire next year, so I...
We may not have a choice on you, that ARPA funds is one and done, I guess we may have to use it just for survival.
Yeah.
The cans get pretty sore when you kick them.
Yeah. Issue I also see with it is, um, we need to tighten the bell, which we can do hopefully some come May, but, uh, there comes a point where it's just, there's just nothing, or you can do sort of closing things, and that's a conversation that might have to happen. The fair, maybe the fairgrounds is only open during summer months, and I'm not saying that's what we do, but we're just gonna try to work within our means. I don't like any of these options at this point, but we're also damaging bloody nose with their... They're not doing a very good job of it.
Well, I'm afraid what we're gonna have to do is reduce an employee's salary.
Yes, and I am, that's probably the quickest way to fix things. To save money.
And with the understanding, and you'll get hit up with it too. Just like we did twenty-eighteen, we're gonna ask for you to bare bones to keep your employees. And...
There is numbers, what were they, what were your last numbers?
I need somebody to find the old in the hills or something. Come on, wear ours, hurry up.
Turn, please, we have a new decision.
Yeah, we do. They've been coming to us for help, and we're putting them off because we're indecisive about a hard decision we have to make on this end, but it's certainly not helping them, and I don't think I'd want to be in their shoes.
So come in your budget book and tell us where to get it. ARPA funds?
That's what I would say.
It's not responsible. I know, but it's not responsible.
So we're looking at about, still, according to Karen's latest figures, about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar loss next year, so...
That's only, that's only the twenty-five. That's not the fifty percent application for sixty-five. That's not the four percent cap.
I'm worried, but that's what we're at.
And I guarantee you that the fifty percent, if that goes on the ballot? AG has to decide whether that's constitutional. I don't know if it was covered or not.
I think she said that something like four hundred people have already applied for the fifty percent long-term homeowners, so... What did you say? Four hundred? Surprise me. It's either fifty percent reduction.
If the ballot initiative, that gets, you know, passed, that's...
I know, that would be real ugly.
So what are we talking right now, five thousand?
Roughly for the, just for till May, end of May. Next budget cycle, right? Yeah, three, four months would be about five thousand, but... Which I'm okay with.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
We just have to keep in mind that this is gonna go through and change our mindset in our budgeting going forward.
It's gonna drastically increase next year.
Right, and we're gonna have to take that into consideration?
Well, not, it's not gonna drastically, but it is gonna add, I mean, it's...
Twenty thousand?
At least, yeah. But if he gets up to six, then it'll be, it could be fifty thousand.
Well, he says he's already budgeted for those, so it should just be minimal. If he's already budgeted for it, and it's just a little bit of a, a dollar or whatever for those six, and he takes that one out, it should not increase his budget that much.
It would just be the...
It'd be just the benefits side that'll have to increase.
Right, that's what we were looking at.
It should.
All of next year.
I was trying not to increase my line item.
Yeah, the, the wage line item will be the same next year as this year, because the benefits side is gonna be increased.
That was the unknown for me, because we don't see that, so...
If there's an increase...
But if it takes away that one employee that was scheduled to make eighteen or twenty, whatever, per hour...
And the reason they spend so much now is because of the overtime.
But we're taking the employee, but he wants to fill it.
No, not that employee, I won't take that employee's salary.
Ow, I mean, next year you want to fill the position?
No, we don't have that position.
He'll stay at six.
I'm gonna take, get rid of an employee altogether, which I don't have.
So you budgeted for seven?
We are budgeted for seven. I wanna turn that same budget, that same number into six.
Because line item should basically stay the same.
And that, and that was kind of our go-to to help you guys out. We're willing to sacrifice that position as a last-ditch effort to say, hey, because, I mean, this decision's gonna affect the administrator, ARPA meeting, because he's not, he's gonna have to come to the board and ask for that position back if they ever get that. But personally, I don't know that I see that happening, you know, in the near future, but you never know. But what we were saying was, at this point, we have to do something as a department...
It shouldn't affect the budget that much.
It'll just be bad. That we would cut one position. Because our math was just my line item. Not affect the line item, get rid of the position, take that money, pay the remaining six better. But what I don't get to see is how that affects benefits, because none of the benefits come out of my item. So I...
Well, we don't have, we don't have a specific dollar amount on what we're going to save with the overtime. That's what we don't have. We have a specific on what the overage of the benefit is, but we don't have that number to apply to it. So, the five thousand is just that side of it. It's not the safe side.
Exactly.
I think one thing we overlooked here a little bit too is, the benefit saving if not having that seventh employee, we're not adding that back in to what it's gonna raise us on the other six, correct?
It'll be next year's six.
You know?
Yeah.
That'd be next year's six.
That's a little bit, that's, I mean, it's not a lot, but at least, but at least that, we haven't figured that benefit cut on that sixth, that seventh employee added back in what is gonna be the increase on the six.
I don't think we're that off as we thought. Anybody wanna make a motion? I'll make, I'll make one.
Motion in a second.
I don't have any more candy.
I don't think it's...
I use them all.
Uh, thank you, Madam.
I'll make a motion. Uh, I'll make a motion to take five thousand dollars out of the ARPA funds to put into the share, or, no, it's not going into his line item, is it? It's going into benefits, to go into our benefits line to cover the difference. It's going to be accrued with his salary increases.
Good enough, honey.
Help me out.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Um, can I have a favorable amendment? I'd rather keep the ARPA funds, if it's only five thousand dollars, then take it out of the financial item.
Okay with that, too.
I'm okay with that.
A thought on that, do we want limited five thousand or whatever the actual stance is? I mean, I can kind of see the difference there. Do we know exactly it's gonna be five thousand?
No, we don't have the issue here.
So that's not to exceed?
As far as that would be, what else on fire?
You know?
It probably will be.
Put it in there, roll over, it's a salary.
So it'll be more than just one account?
Hold any associated cost of benefits out of financial item?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
I will go with that, I'm agreeing with that.
So my discussion, I, I have something on the discussion status. In the event that we're not seeing something here, Brian, that really throws this thing out of whack come next year, you got that sixth employee, um, then we might have to have another discussion, because I, I mean, I'm not, I don't know that it would, but just, just the increase to each of the... Is it four here or five? One, two, three, five is about nineteen dollars an hour. So that's pretty much eaten up the one position. Once we add those other two positions, we're still, we're talking just a few bucks per hour, right? For those other... Okay. I have faith that there's anything to be done. We need to, other discussion.
Just a quick...
All those in favor of the...
I have to have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, and now I forgot what it was.
It's not very quick.
No. Oh, do we have to approve his, his change in wages?
Do a different motion to do that, with the rule? Okay, yeah, that's probably a good idea. So, so this motion is to...
Turn, move to hold any associated costs associated with benefits out of financial admin to cover the difference that is incurred with salary increases.
Fiscal year twenty, twenty-five. Right?
Yes.
Twenty...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-two. Yeah.
It's twenty-five, it'd be, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Now we need a motion.
Here's a question. The hourly, can you give me the hourly grade team? Oh, you got it right here? One, two, two, three. Okay, yes. You got the both of them?
Correct, twenty-one, twenty-two, two, twenty-three, eighty-five.
But that's not all of them, is it?
You need the range.
Yeah.
So you want the base to the...
Yes, yeah.
Twenty-three, eighty-five is the base. Jason is twenty-six. The max is twenty-six. Twenty-seven, fifty? The max would be... I thought we were doing a dollar fifty on Jason. Oh, yeah, sorry, I went to the wrong one there. Dollar twenty-seven.
So we're going from...
Eighteen to twenty-three?
We went from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-three, eighty-five, because that's when they're certified. We hire them out of lower, that's the max. I'm doing this wrong.
All we need is the top wage, it's gonna be raising the top wage from twenty-one, twenty-three...
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-three, eighty-five. For detention officers.
Certified, certified.
Certified officer.
Okay.
So when I hire somebody that's not certified, we're gonna start at a lower rate?
With starting wage up?
Savings there for a period of time.
What's starting wage gonna be then?
That's five.
Twenty? Twenty, and then there's...
Twenty, okay.
And you step throughout that, in here, which we'll get on to, the twenty-three, but...
I'm trying to get up.
Yeah.
Good base for a good motion.
Went from eighteen ninety-two to twenty.
The start.
Yeah.
Try to make this, yes.
Okay, Ed, let's do it.
I'd make a motion to allow Brian to cut his detention officers from seven employees to six, raise the starting wage from eighteen ninety-two to twenty, raise the top salary from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-three, eighty-five.
No, it's not. Top salary is actually twenty-seven, fifty. For Jason.
No, I'm talking just these detention officers here. Like, that's the thing right now, is getting these detention officers.
Whether you do the corporal. Well, there's that corporal position in there, too, but I don't... So this is the easiest place to see it. So twenty-seven, fifty for Jason.
Go to the top wage you call it.
At the top wage.
No corporate.
Because I'll back it down. And then you get a little vacancy savings. Twenty-seven, fifty.
Pull a motion off the table.
Thank you.
Top wage is twenty-seven, fifty?
Yes.
And...
Yeah.
Increase the top wage from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-seven, fifty.
No, twenty-six, it's all in this paragraph.
Yeah.
Okay, Brian! What's the, what's the, tell us the difference. What, tell us, can I help you?
I don't know if I can. There's only one at that twenty-seven.
Fifty.
Fifty. That's his category. Nobody else will ever get there unless he leaves.
Which is okay, making that the top wage, I mean, you're gonna be ensuring that that's never...
Yeah, I can't, yeah. So the top wage for the remaining five would be the...
Twenty, twenty-three, eighty-five.
Twenty-three, eighty-five.
Well, four, and then one at twenty-four, ninety-six.
Corporal at twenty-four, ninety-six. Jason, I'm sorry, what's your official title? Lieutenant at twenty-seven, fifty, and detention officers at twenty-three, eighty-five.
So corporal at...
Certified.
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 And corporal was what?
Twenty-four, ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
For the side you can't see. That's the whole point.
Yeah. And that's exactly how you requested it.
Yeah. What do you got? Can you help that?
I'm beyond help right here now.
So detention, non-corp, non-certified detention officer at a certain rate, top?
Is twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right?
Certified.
Certified one is, non-certified is twenty, twenty, or twenty?
And the certified top is twenty-three, eighty-five. Certified top is twenty-three, eighty-five. Non-certified top is...
Twenty.
Twenty. Certified top is twenty-three, eighty-five. Non-certified top is...
Twenty.
Twenty. Corporal, twenty-four...
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. And lieutenant at twenty-seven, fifty. That's the motion, I hope you should pride me.
So we're the corporal and lieutenant in the six positions?
Hmm.
Okay. So that's four, four of them at the other, at the other wages, okay.
And just, just for the benefit of everybody, the corporal position, I'm not even qualified for a while, so that's not even...
But at least it's, it's covered in the motion, okay.
It's covered in it.
And what we budgeted next year as such?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're gonna raise the starting wage from eighteen ninety-two to twenty for uncertified... officers. Raise the top wage from twenty-one, twenty-two to, what's that?
Twenty-three, eighty-five.
To twenty-three, eighty-five for certified. With the corporal position, top wage twenty-four, ninety-six, and lieutenant twenty-seven.
Fifty.
Fifty. All right. Make a motion to allow Brian to cut his detention employees from seven to six, raise the starting wage from eighteen ninety-two to twenty dollars an hour for non-certified employees, with the top wage of certified employees at...
Twenty-three, eighty-five.
Twenty-three, eighty-five for four employees, one position, the corporal position, top wage at twenty-four, ninety-six, one position for lieutenant's, top wage at twenty-seven, fifty.
Thanks.
Very good.
Go away. I just want to make a motion this. Good records for somebody looking down the road.
Um, any discussion?
No.
Discuss it to death. All right. All those in favor of the motion on the floor or on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, guys. I'm sorry.
Apologize for the pain.
Don't do that. We all feel it, so I get it.
It's going to be an interesting conversation this summer.
Just another reminder for anybody listening or watching that, that the increases would still keep them within their budget payroll line.
Yeah.
That's a change right now.
Call to tape.
I'm going to get this.
I have a question. Another comment. I didn't know how that was going to be handled with the sheriff's department and the detention. And I am very pleased with what I just saw. To me, that is the number one priority of the county. And we made it the number one priority of the county and it got resolved. So thank you.
Thank you.
You guys stay here with the tape and the handcuffs.
Jason asked, why you turned him away? I thought we were friends.
She said, she said she was good.
Oh, she's not coming back?
Oh! I'm gone. I'm gone.
Good or Suzie's good?
Somebody's good, that's all we know.
Thanks, you guys. She was, I mean, she had all her stuff and had to do it.
She got lost in Grand.
What's it all like?
No. It's got to be at least thirty-two steps.
It's not easy.
I'm glad it happened, though.
That would be the hardest.
Yeah, no kidding. There's some things that say, I hate to say it, but...
All right, Suzie.
All right, Suzie, you handed me some. Okay, start asking questions so everyone knows what you want. I gave you my investment sheet. And I've heard that you're, the, um, you're worrying about the maturity dates. Um, in November? October, November? Yeah, I think that's a good question.
I think the thought was when they come to maturity, maybe have you come in. Isn't that what the thought was? So we can discuss.
That's what I'm saying.
We're worried about them, just have you come in when they...
Because right now, they do not do investments on CDs. They have, they have, maybe put everything down next money market.
Okay.
The money market accounts, the way that those are defined, that can come and go as they please, correct?
Yes, yes. I can get in, yeah, I can get in there and we get four point zero seven percent, and that's renewable every six months, as we said. So I can get in there and get whatever I need at any point in time without any penalty.
Right. Okay. So that's the awesomeness of the money market.
Yeah.
So these, I take these top four here, Northern Banking, are CDs?
Those are CDs that have not matured yet. And they will be maturing October, November.
Okay, yeah, was that the dates on that?
The one that matures on the night tomorrow, actually.
That is the one at the First Year Bank for the five hundred and forty. I remember we started at five hundred thousand, so now we have five forty-one. Tomorrow I will reinvest it plus their interest. If that's what you want to do, if not, I'll take it out of there and get rid of it.
I think it's a great idea. They're reinvested.
It makes some interest over there, so.
Yeah, I make them give me the special rate for seven months or whatever it is. And then the Pinnacle Bank, I just have a hundred and nine thousand there. Most of the money is over at the first one. They don't charge me penalties for it. Right now, the money market, do you know how much is in it? Huh? Did you get your question answered about the three hundred and fifty thousand? No, I don't even know about the three fifty. I don't know what that is. I just remember at one point for the bridge, we put away five hundred thousand. Three hundred and fifty thousand. Well, one time it was five hundred. Yeah, but then it was lower to three hundred and fifty, and then it got spent. So that money is gone when the Highway eighty-five project came on. So it got moved from the County Road Funds into a line item. Got spun out of the line item, yes.
So the current Highway eighty-five line item isn't that line item?
Should be old.
Well, yeah, current, I have an old Highway eighty-five line item. And there's almost two, three hundred thousand in there, like two eighty or something.
There's still some money.
Yeah.
See, now I don't have any more. So I just have it in the money account. Yeah. So what's this Y-Class Road? That is, um, that Troy Hunsucker. That is a money market also. Yeah, but what's the, you got it labeled as road? Yeah, it is road name. So then...
We pulled it out of the road fund and put a two hundred thousand in there, basically?
Basically what it was. I don't know if we pulled it out of the...
Definitely.
I think that's what we have. Huh?
See, that's a hundred thousand sent back every different week.
We don't do that anymore.
We have for the last...
No, I don't think they told anything about pulling any money back. Here, in the budget, it has not, it hasn't shifted in the budget. No, I haven't put in...
We've done that for the last...
I've never been told about it. Yeah, because when I was looking at the budget, a lot of those numbers didn't shift. Nope, they didn't change. Because I wasn't told I was supposed to move money at the end of the, end of the fiscal year. Yeah, if we looked those up, when you guys do, but when you do your budgeting, usually you would say to, okay, I, you need to move this much out of reserve and this, and this much out of, move some depreciation up into this. Go look at your budgets. Go look at your budgets and see. Yeah, they haven't moved. I haven't moved. I don't think they've moved. I have not, I have not been told to do that. Yeah, but I printed them off and they've not moved. Yep, they've not moved.
Yeah, we have.
Not on my side, they haven't moved. Well, if you got us the, the last budget sheets from about the last four years, because I printed them off. Nope, they haven't moved because I've not been told that, I ask if anything's getting swapped around, and everybody says, nope, I, okay.
Their budget, it's been in our memo.
Then we need to make sure we do that.
Seeing your memo, I need to, I need to know.
Before the end of this year, we need to make sure we earmark a hundred thousand out of the road.
That's the way it always used to be. That's the way it always used to be when the old commissioners were here. I'd always move money out of reserve or into something, then depreciation into something else, or we would always build up, try to build up the cash reserve account. Come on, this is the slowest thing. Let's go to twenty-three, Suzie. See, I did all my figures beforehand, this is even further, so.
Well, I take it out of here. We will go back and it's been taken out for the last three or four years out of this.
You've bargained it out. But cash reserve and all that stuff's never been touched.
I can address it because it's been taken out.
Yeah, see, your, your depreciation reserve has not changed.
Yeah, there's cash reserve.
Cash reserve...
Might have changed by a little bit.
Nine twenty-eight, nine seventy-nine. It's kind of worse.
It's twenty-four, twenty-three's, twenty-three's the same.
Twenty-two, twenty-three. What does that one say?
My, that cash reserve might have a little bit of interest. It has interest in it. Might have a little bit of interest, but that's it. It goes from three, so twenty, twenty-four was thirty, three point three million, twenty-three was two eight, which you made that much. So you took money out of our one. Oh, no, it went down three. Money got taken out of our cash reserve and put somewhere else. Oh, it's got added in. No, it's got added up, but your depreciation hasn't.
So this one went down by one.
County Road means...
Nine, and this one went down to nine. There's a million less. This one lost.
You guys move from twenty-three to twenty-four, you leave five hundred thousand dollars. Do you have a record of that?
Depreciation is the same.
Depreciation's the same.
The County Road went down a million dollars.
Every year for the last...
Five years.
It's always the same.
County Road. Then I'm going to need all that stipend ready. How come the County Road only went to, up two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand? How much sprung out to what? Three point seven to, from twenty-three to twenty-four, so not twenty-five. I haven't looked up twenty-five yet. We get more than that in taxes. We get more than that. Right now, in my investment sheet, I can't... We get way more than pure distribution than two hundred thousand. Right now, in the money market for the road is three million, one seventeen, four seventeen, eighty-three. Three point one seven. Three point one one, seven four, one seventeen, thirteen. Now, that's just in the investments. Now, I've got another two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in, in another account that we use daily, that I put road money into and whatever Marty spends comes out of. I have a headache. I don't know how you do it, Suzie. Sometimes the stuff are good. How come? Well, this is interesting. I'm going to compare it up or, you know, past fiscal years to these fiscal years, I, and I don't have that in front of me, I don't really know the answers.
Showing the twenty-four, we took a hundred thousand out to the rate period.
Okay.
In our notes.
In your notes? Now, I thought we was never told those notes, because I don't remember. Change, changes to twenty-four.
It's also been done every year, so I don't know.
There's some funky chicken going on.
So your estimate is the...
There's twenty-four, there's twenty-three.
County General Fund is the exact same number.
Here's twenty-five. No, stay.
There's cash reserve.
Don't forget this paper, Suzie, please. You don't want to have to fill me up.
Cash reserve in, as of June thirtieth, May fourth. She cashed her on June thirty.
So when you go to this one, see, it changes.
Stay the exact same number during the course of the year.
Because nobody, you don't move money even out of it. Cash reserve can't grow unless you move money into it.
So the cash reserve reserve is in those money markets?
It's mixed in the rest of it, yes, it's not being marked out.
So it doesn't grow, though?
No, it does not grow. Because I'm not told to take money out, you know, if I could put into there for the reports. Yes, Ed?
Are you saying that we're going to have, that's not in our cash reserves in an account where we can draw money or draw interest?
It's all in the general fund, it won't be brought down in the interest, cash reserve is.
Oh, so when the, the interest gets just added into a different line?
Yeah, see, now, this is the, this is a daily worksheet that we do. And right now, this is how much money we have that I, I showed you. And this is your Pinnacle Bank savings, Pinnacle Bank investment, First Northern Investments. Those are still those, those are those four. Yeah, those are those four CDs. Um, the money, the Y- class is at two hundred thousand, First Year is the five forty-one. And then there's a First Year checking account that's going to get closed out and moved down into investments, because we, up and up, and now they will not accept people going in there to pay their tax bills or anything, because they don't have liability of keeping that money. So, um, I'm going to move that back down into that, the investment there. Um, the road, money market's got the three million in it, the general fund, money market's got the four point eight in it. First Northern, that's the interest on the road account. The road is money I just, it's basically a savings account, but when Marty or somebody spends out of the road, then I take it out of the care and, not this money.
So, so what do you, the interest earned?
Mm-hmm.
It appears we're just maintaining that captured reserve, but we're moving the interest into something else?
The interest goes into the general fund interest.
Okay.
The one hundred and eleven on my side.
That explains a little to me there.
And then the road interest goes into the four thirteen fifty.
Which is the construction.
Yeah, which is the road account. But the interest is supposed to go in the same account, isn't it? It goes into the four thirteen fifty. The road interest goes into the road account. Right. The four thirteen fifty account. Right. The general interest goes into the general. That's what you're asking? But the, what, what I'm asking is the road construction and maintenance fund. So you get it from your gas tax. The interest on the investment for the road goes into the road. Goes into that account. Goes into the four thirteen fifty, which is the whole road account. Okay, because it's supposed to be kept separate along with the road. The interest is? Yeah. The interest. No, the interest is supposed to keep... The interest is going into the road. Construction fund? Yes. The one we keep separate? Yeah, the four thirteen fifty. That's, that's, that's the road account that we, that's got the stipulations and stuff on it. That I call it. Okay. That's what you left the papers there for. Yeah.
More questions?
More questions, I think.
Any listener? Yes, please. She'll show me if I, if I sit down with her, she'll show me. Every month, what they spend out of it and... And what you get in, too. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, that one goes a few months. And these Wesley County Gazette ones, you know, that you spend, you see here, that's all advertising stuff. Most of it's private.
All right. Thanks, Suzie.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Ah!
Make your comment. Marty, you got anything?
Keep it short.
I do have something. Keep it short.
She has a quick comment.
Oh, Arch Cursin, and is the Mallow, um, is the Mallow job still open?
The position?
Mm-hmm.
The...
Mallow manager?
I don't believe so.
It's on the website.
Okay. Vera?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Ed?
I got a headache.
Um, just in case nobody noticed or has been paying attention, I just, we have a public hearing, or not a public hearing, we have a public hearing on the thirty-first for the EMS district out of Fairgrounds at six o'clock PM. Um, I encourage anybody and everybody to do attend to can. We went to City Hall and provided them with the information last night, and the town opted last week. Provided as much info as we could for any questions at that, so. I hope you will show up and ask questions, and we move forward. Thank you, Ed.